I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Demore?
Present.
Shields?
Here.
Wagner?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Murphy?
Present. Now we have the opportunity, city councils members, do you ask to have our city assessor present a little bit? So, Robert Engelbrecht is here. Robert is here, he's gonna talk on his assessment administration process for the city of Petoskey. Come on down, Robert. Thank you for showing up.
I'm also a personal property examiner. And I've had over thirty years of the property tax administration since nineteen ninety-two. Been a long time. When I was putting this together, I kind of did math and thirty years gone by pretty fast. Thirteen years of that before I came to Petoskey Woods, I was the compensation director. So, I reside in Central Lake with my wife and child. I have a contract assessor, meaning I'm not employed here, I have another contract to do the services. I typically hold my office hours regularly Wednesdays and Fridays in City Hall or by conference. There's a constituent that wants me to meet with them outside of the conference. What I'd like to do tonight is just kind of go through what involves the property administration and some different stats that has occurred over this past year. On this, CS is responsible for listing an inventory of individual properties. Also, I'm supposed to estimate, according to the best information and judgment, true cash value and assessed value of every taxable person in the city. And then, once those values are established through my analysis, I place the assessed values and any exemptions in the assessment role by the first Monday of March. The assessing department also performs ownership changes, mailing address changes. We maintain all maps of person boundaries, maintain label descriptions for all land. I also prepare sketches of all buildings and summarize characteristics. And I track and apply all my properties. Other duties for the city of Petoskey assessor that's basically coming down for helping us to have a council here. I maintain nine-one-one addresses. Assist with the land division. The city of Petoskey assessor is the secretary of order review. Manage and assist with special assessed properties such as, without limit to industrial facilities, tax, IFTs, downtown development act, the BEAs, taxing increment, finance authority, tip-ends, and the built properties, payment and loop tax properties. Also, I prepare and make miscellaneous reports pertaining property for constable staff. So, the assessment role of development actually begins in April and ends in March for the following year. The first Monday of March, I have to have the assessment role ready for board review. In twenty twenty-two, that was completed in March eighth. And for twenty twenty-two, the assessed values see why increased nine percent, in which equated it to a seven percent increase in taxable value. As you can see by the graph on the right-hand side, you know, the values since two thousand twelve have been trending up. Obviously, the taxable value is capped and that doesn't, you know, go as high as the assessed value. But the city has enjoyed an upward trend in the property valuations. Over five hundred seventy-five documents pertaining to property ownership recorded and processed by the assessing department, when I say the assessing department, when I contracted. My wife who is also certified assessor helps me with data entry. So, most of those documents, she's placed in computers so I can use these for analysis of sales or property transfer. Over seven hundred parcels, about twenty percent is physically physically visited annually by me. So, I visit over seven hundred parcels in the city, which is about twenty percent of the total. With that, I verify any building measurements that need to be checked. I update property photos, interview property owners, verify new dwellings additions or accessory buildings that's made new construction that occurs in the city. And then I also review many taxes and parcels. Also included is my process principal residence exceptions. And then I canvas personal property for new value, buy the existing personal property value, and then coordinate the process better than property. Once the assessment role is complete, it's turned over to the board review. And board review consists of three members. The members are Mr. William Banks, Joe Worster, and Mr. Joel Nachtraub out of Bay Harbor. They meet in March, July, and December. And of course, as mentioned earlier, the assessor is the secretary of the board. The March session requires four public meetings. First meeting is an organizational meeting, and we have three other PO meetings. They're all open to the public, but the three PO meetings when the public come in express their concerns over the valuation. The July and December sessions are required, one meeting if that's needed. The July and December board review, basically what they do is they correct any clear errors or homestead exception changes or initial mistakes from fact on the existing tax rule. So, once the March board review meets, the values are set, sent into the county for county utilization. Any changes of those values go through our March board review. This year in twenty twenty-two, we heard fifteen taxpayers representing nineteen parcels, which is probably the lowest in the past since I started in two thousand thirteen. Over on the right-hand side, you can see the account for the past five years of the visits or the kills. So, it was very minor, the percentage of the total parcels, I'm gonna deal a lot of the values, but we do have some. The goals for my office and myself for the twenty twenty-three assessment cycle is to continue to improve our procedures to ensure a fair and equitable assessment system. And that's the main goal for me, is to make sure that the assessment role is spares in me. Of course, continue to improve public relations and transparency of the assessment process to the council and actors and city council. And also, as needed, to assess the council city manager and staff with various projects involving property value. And then, continue to go and keep property records up to date. And then work with county equalization and GIS to correct the realty of property. That's pretty much a overview of my office and what I did do. What I did do this past year is, if there are any questions, the council.
Council, do you have any questions for Bob? Mr. Wagner?
Thank you, Mayor. Bob, thanks for being here. Just for everybody's knowledge, the reason we asked Bob to be here is Bob and attorney Jim Murray and our city manager are the only three people who actually report to us. And Bob being a contractor, we don't see much of him. And there was nothing wrong, we just wanted to meet our meet our city assessor and hear a little bit about what he did and how things going. So, I really appreciate your being here.
Well, thank you, thank you. And that's a good thing that you don't hear very much from me to be.
Thank you.
Ms. Walker?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for being here as well, I appreciate your time. I had a question about the type of tax bases that we have. It seems like, from what I garnished, we have like four different flavors. So, you have like the homestead exemption, meaning like it's your homestead, it's your primary residence. And then there would be like a non-homestead, different tax rate, and maybe commercial and industrial, you mentioned. Are there any other flavors in that mix that would be part of the tax base for the city of Petoskey?
Sure. There's one taxable value, everyone receives a taxable value. And that's derived through the history of the property. There's certain rules to what can be done at that taxable value. For the most part, the taxable value will consume the price. Of that taxable value, there's different exceptions that can go on that for the tax bill or to exempt the miller rates. And one of them is, everyone familiar with the homestead exemption? And that exempts all the eighteen mills that school operate. Other exceptions, I had explained earlier, veterans exemption. That is for any disabled veteran that receives disability from the federal government. They have to annually apply for the exemption. And what they do is they file an affidavit filed in my office along with a letter from the VA saying that they get disability. And with that, the board review can exempt a hundred percent of the taxable value. And then the other, the other one that's popular when I first started here, but we haven't had too many advocates in the last three or four years, the poverty exemption. And that is kind of a strict area where, you know, if the property owner can prove that they can't pay for the taxes for that year, they fill out an affidavit and send in certain paperwork income tax statements and tax statements to board review to determine. And then, first that taxable value, once that's set, then the miller rates are set by the different taxing jurisdictions, the city, the county, the schools, and so on, the taxable is.
I have another question, Mayor, if I may.
Please.
So, would that also include for a development that had like a brownfield development and exemption? That would be part, that would be part of the assessment that you would do on a property as well?
Those type of exemptions come through, there's certain steps that you as a governing body have to take in order to determine those types of exceptions through the state. You know, it's pretty specific of the type of project that the property owner wants to take on. So, those are out there. I don't, we used to have the industrial facilities tax, we don't have any more of those, those had expired. We have a payment of legal tax.
And then, if I may, Mayor.
Sure.
Thank you. So, you mentioned several of the intergovernmental partnerships between Emmett County Equalization and GIS Department. Don't they maintain the general database? Or do we have a separate database that's available and accessible on our website? Or is it just generally, do you always refer people to the Emmett County?
It's your neighbor. We're Emmett County, presence of tax bills for the city. They take the information from my office to, you know, any name changes or anything like that and apply it to this database. And on that database, it is online. Limited information. I also have information available online on my webpage of the actual specifics of the property. I give, right after March board review, I send a file to the county and they upload it through this ESN website. And it gives characteristics of the lot size and building size and so forth. But that is pretty static because, you know, like first part of April, any changes after that is not uploaded to the file.
And then lastly, my last question there, if I may. What is the majority, when you said that you review about fifteen or nine to fifteen, I believe you reviewed in twenty twenty-two. What is the main reason that taxpayers will come before the board of review to ask about their taxes?
Anything but saying that the assessment's doing a good job. No, they have, they have various reasons. You know, for the most part, a lot of these taxpayers will, you know, by law, I have to set out an assessment change notice. And once this notice comes in, then our unit exists, or whatever. So, a lot of times I get phone calls from the property. I think that's, why do you think that? Because proof is on the back door, it's kind of a wide value basis. So, a lot of those, a lot of those questions get answered before they go to the board review. But at some times, you just have to agree to disagree. And those are, those are basically the property owners who are, you know. I really think this value is this, they don't come up with their information right away. First board operates, board review operates independently of the assessor. So, whatever their decision is, it's fine. I'm basically, yeah, I'm the secretary there, I'm just there to answer any questions.
And take notes. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mr. Engelbrecht, for your time. I just have curiosity since you're here, you mentioned we canvass for new value. Can you expound in what that means and what are, my understanding of assessing just comparables? What are, what are, how do you compare changes that you see?
When I canvass for new values, first of all, I look at all the tax, or portioned tax purposes over here. You know, the obvious tax, you know, those are obvious. The non-obvious ones are, you know, over on, I think it was over on Washington or Grove Street. There was a parsonage that was sold, a church parsonage that was specifically exempt when it was sold to an individual property. So, that was, you know, verified, it was placed on the roll. Another example last year was the Harv Baptist Church. You know, that was sold to, you know, they weren't having any worship services in there and it was sold to a private individuals, so that was what I'm calling. So, I'm looking at information like that. The other new value that I'm talking about is any new construction. You put on a new deck, you pull a building from the county, I get notified that you pulled a new deck in the fall. Typically, I go out there and say, you know, this is the deck on. You know, sometimes the building, if it's involved quite a bit, it has to go through a full year. But law says I have to put value on it as the center third first any given year. So, I'm going in there looking, well, this partially built, so does that value on this year or the other year? Or for the following year? So, you know, I'm asking the property owner, well, how far along are you on this? When do you think it could be done? You know, that sort of thing. So, those are the new values that I pick.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I had the opportunity of, I went to a session of yours and met with the three board members as well. I watched how they handled it, and Joel had a question. I think it's really a great process for the city of Petoskey. I think you're doing a great job representing Petoskey, and thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. As added, for the board of members, it's a tough job for them. And I think the city has a unique, or unique experience on the board. We have two attorneys and Mr. Nachtraub and Bay Harbor, both Bay Harborites right now. So, it really helps out through the process. So, that's, that's great, and those board members are, you know, a point by.
We do have an opening of a alternative for that group. If somebody is interested and would like to serve on that board, you heard that it meets three times a year. One day, you need some daytime to be there.
Yeah, it's tough because of the times of year, you have to, because in March, everyone wants to be down in Florida. March, you know, that's the busy time for the board review.
And that's a two-day, it's two days, correct?
It's actually four days.
Four days now, okay. So, if you know of anybody that is interested, talk to me. I will put your name, we can probably vote on you today. But thank you very much. The gentleman that have been on there, that are on there quite a while on the board. My concern is if one of them does retire, goes on to something else for the community, then we may need somebody else. So, please consider supporting the city with that opportunity. Next, it's the consent agenda. And it's the adoption of the proposed resolution that would confirm approval of the following. The June sixth, two thousand twenty-two, Frederick Sessions City Council meeting minutes, as well as acknowledgement of a receipt of certain reported transactions that have occurred since June sixth, two thousand twenty-two. And I take it to the board for possible motion or questions or changes. Mr. Demore?
I just have one point of clarification and potential change. Under council comments, it indicates council member Demore received resident complaints of speeding on Michigan Street and asked if additional traffic study data was available for Michigan Street. That's true, but my specific request was that we get a presentation from Chief Breed on that. So, that would be my, I don't know if everyone recalls, but that was my request.
Your request was, again?
That Chief Breed present to us about the second study that has been done.
Okay. Could you put that in the minute?
Thank you.
Anything else, Ms. Walker?
I have a question, thanks, Mayor. So, I just wanted to go to the check register, page three.
Give everybody a second. Dave?
So, two line items, GHD Services, Inc., contracted services for eleven thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars. And Hubble, Roth, and Clark contracted services for twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars.
GHD is a capital service from the library. I'm not sure if that's PETA related or not.
It's for their website, I think they redesigned their website.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, what was the other one?
Hubble, Roth, and Clark Incorporated. Twenty-nine, nine, four, eight, down about this far.
Hubble, Roth is one of our consultants engineers for water sewer treatment plant. There's always some type of studies that will have been going on for the sewer.
And one more, Mayor.
Sure.
I'm on page five. So, Standard Electric Company at the bottom, inventory of materials for the total of forty-six thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Is that conduit for road construction or is that just?
That's the electric firm, and usually that's wiring, you see that line, screw wire, screw wire, some type of.
Any else, council, questions? Ms. Walker?
I'll be able to make a motion there.
Okay. We have a motion, Mr. Support, okay. We have a motion from this Walker in a second from Mr. Wagner. I was just looking to see if there was, is there any other thing that you want to talk on? Ms. Walker?
There was one other thing on page nine, sorry. Thank you. RW Mercer Company, capital outlay for total of fifty thousand.
Oh. Actually, that was the Marina. Yeah, that was a Marina fuel tank.
Okay, so I have a motion from Ms. Walker in a second from Mr. Wagner. Any other discussion, council? I take it to city clerk platform role.
Walker? Yes. Wagner?
Yes.
Demore? Aye. Shields?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes, motion passes five zero on the consent agenda. Thank you for the changes that you made in the questions that you asked. Next, this is an opportunity for the public to address any subject they wish with city council. You will be talking to us up here, not to the audience. The other thing is, is if there is an issue that you wish to address that is on the agenda for the rest of the night, I ask that you hold it until then. Is there anybody that wishes to speak to council at this time? If you do, you'll step up to the mic, give us your full name and your full address. Yes, it's on the agenda. Yeah, did you get an agenda?
I have your.
The agendas. There are agendas out there, aren't there? When you come in, if you ever want an agenda, it's online, but it's also the opportunity right out here. Sarah put some out for those to kind of be up to date on what we are doing here. Thank you very much for collecting those. Anybody else want an agenda? Okay. Mr. Grantson?
Jeffrey Anthony, the one Baxter Street. And I just want to bring to the attention of the council asking them to then inquire with their staff, the plan of city attorney and city manager were due or removed since time that we talked about, Harper-Halls, about Bush. My memory is quite clear on this, as I attended every meeting with plans zone in this council discussing that without an over there, which was to be two phases there. In the midst of their second phase, which is zoned and approved under the zoning as multi-family. I'm hearing things from people with good information and on their own website that they are planning to open, approved as a multi-family apartments as increased space for people that are completing treatment there. And I just want this to stay on city staff's radar, particularly our two newest staff, but also the city attorney, if it's possible, that some reconnaissance of sorts checking in to see that they are proceeding along the path that they were approved. Because I'm concerned that if it gets too far, there's no way to slow that down. They also, as you may be aware, have acquired Rovers property some time ago. And my suspicion is that they will likely build another building there for whatever purpose. And that if this one is allowed to be occupied in the fashion that they seek it, as opposed to what you will approve, then that just doubles. then that just doubley impacts our neighborhood in particular and the city. It says a terrible precedent, so I just want to pull my record for that. Thank you.
Mr. Murray, do you recall the conditions for occupancy of that building? Was it family? I thought we had talked of, but I didn't know if that family.
Exhaustively on that topic, but I don't.
Perhaps next meeting, could you give us a feedback where we're at?
I'm why I mean, I'm going to investigate whether there.
We can look into it.
Get back to city council on this, okay? And we'll get back to you. Thank you, Mr. Grantson. Anyone else wants to speak to counsel on a matter? Good morning, evening. Spend it way down. There you go.
Oh.
Or just hold it.
Thank you. My name is Carol House. I live on Michigan Street at seven one nine. And today I'm speaking of a concern both of my husband, Robert, and mine. I have a neighbor who last July fourth was shooting off fireworks from his sloping driveway facing four homes across Lockwood Street. These fireworks were very dangerous because they were flaming as they exploded at an angle towards our trees, our alley, and our homes. The house is on southeast corner of Mitchell and Lockwood. And my question to the council is, are there any Petoskey rules or laws preventing aerial fireworks which explode in the trees and on the rooftops of our homes and garages? I even found part of one of the fireworks in my backyard in my garden. And I would like to just discuss what rules there might be. Because I called the police the next day after last year, and they couldn't help me at all because they said every holiday people can take off with firecrackers and use them. And it seemed like there were no regulations at all when it came to a neighborhood. I wanted to bring that up before the Fourth of July.
Okay. Thank you. I believe. Thanks for returning. Maybe better if you just kept it tonight. There are fireworks ordinances in the city of Petoskey. I don't have them right now with me. I actually looked them up. I know it's five holidays, I believe, that you're allowed. You're not allowed to blast them off on June teenth, which is a federal holiday. But the city council had to approve which of the federal holidays would they would participate in allowing fireworks. They're restricted to the night before and through that evening. What I would do, if you have a situation like that, I'd call nine one one and get the police to come while it's going on. Because otherwise, the evidence is cardboard and where did it come from? What I would do is I would guess I would call Public Safety the minute it happens. Nine one one. We and the council, most of us, we're not happy with the fireworks situation. You'd probably have a very much more restricted use here. Is that correct, council? We've given the opportunity, but we have to go by the we have to our minimal, the most that we're allowing is the minimal amount that can be allowed. We are in the most restricted possible plan for fireworks in the city of Petoskey.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Miss Walker?
Just a point of clarification, because I think what Mrs. House is asking is also, I don't know if the fireworks ordinance covers like the direction or how fireworks can be used, just the like the timeline of when that's acceptable. So I I don't know, and I'm unfamiliar with the ordinance language in particular, but I'm assuming that there is, it's up to the discretion of the fireworks person to.
Pretty much, yes.
Okay.
I mean, they're responsible for what they do.
And you mentioned, or she mentioned that the house was on the corner of of Mitchell and the south east corner, southeast corner of Mitchell and Lockwood. I know exactly who you're talking about. Thank you.
Anyone else wants to speak to counsel? We have somebody online that would like to speak to counsel.
Yes, this is Kathleen Bickford, three one nine Grove Street. I spoke two weeks ago. The situation with the Airbnb at three fifteen Grove approved somewhat with the the parking. But on the eleventh, at approximately just after eleven P M, I was woken up by yelling and screaming in the house next door. It would be the west window of their house. I think it's their dining room. That didn't cease until about midnight, and then I heard a vehicle leave. A week later, on the eighteenth, at one thirty-four A M, I was woken up again by yelling and screaming. I could not fall back to sleep until about four in the morning. The trauma is so intense that I am. You can't understand the stress unless it's next to you. But you don't have it next to you, but I do have it next to me. I want to know what the ordinance is in terms of single-family homes being used as a business. I want to know what the laws of accepted decency are because I am constantly being peeped at with people looking in my windows of my house. And I want to know what is the ordinance relating to any privacy fences being put up on a property that's a business, which would block that business from their customers looking into the privacy and invading the privacy of private property owners? The gentleman that owns the house adjacent to the the old church, which is a yellow building now, stopped and talked to me yesterday when he was walking his dog. They're very quiet there, he tells me. And there's also a very large, high white fence that surrounds that property. So the adjacent property owners aren't intruded upon their privacy. I keep thinking this is going to get better, but it does not. If things don't improve, they always get worse in life, and that's what I'm experiencing. And I want to know from the city council if this is going to change and stay changed.
Ms. Bickford, first off, you are allowed to have a fence around your yard if you wish to put it around your yard. That building, that house that you're talking about is not a commercial building. While it is one of the twenty that we allow short-term rentals in, to being grandfathered in. So it's not a commercial building. It's actually a residential. I would probably fence it. I can give you one personal recommendation at night, and that would be to use earplugs. I have had to use that up in my neighborhood sometimes when the kids skateboarding at midnight down Lockwood Street. Sometimes I've heard them. I I have earplugs and I just put them in so that I can go back to sleep.
Mayor, there's nothing, don't compare putting earplugs in for people skateboarding with with a pardon me, but a full-blown piss-up weekend after weekend, day after day. They come there to party. That is their only objective. The majority of the people that come to this residence next door. I don't know why any business has the right. Tell me what businesses downtown intrude upon residents. They don't. For 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 our business to not have to put up any type of in this in the deck. I mean, it looks right into my house in two windows. They don't have anything blocking it so that they're not invading my privacy.
I would suggest.
No, I'm tired of being looked at and observed like I've some some experiment. And if things don't change, then I'm going to look to for the State Attorney General's Office for some help because I'm done. I cannot take the stress of not having a normal life.
Did Public Safety get a hold of you after the last meeting when I requested they would come and meet with you?
No, they did not.
It will happen. And I will get a feedback on that, and I will, as I said, follow up with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything that's not related to the ADUs? Yeah. If you want to talk about ADUs. ADUs?
That's the zoning ordinance we're talking about.
It's number nine. Number nine. That's okay. Mr. Smith?
She lives next door to an Airbnb?
Yes.
Okay, so my question is, are Airbnbs taxed as commercial property? Because they are. Are they not?
No, it's a residential dwelling.
Bullshit.
Okay.
Well, I mean, if it's a business, I'm sorry. Isn't it a business if it's an Airbnb?
You are allowed to have private businesses. You can have an enterprise in your home.
If you don't disturb neighborhood, I believe there's regulations on that, right?
And we have a public safety to call and to document it. And we cannot do anything other than that with the fireworks where our hands are tied. Public safety is the number to call to get us as close as you're going to get to what you want.
Well, I personally have empathy for that lady because unless you live in the neighborhood where there is an Airbnb, you cannot imagine what it's like. And you can complain whatever. These people know the tricks. They trick, 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 and they prolong it. They get a little fine. They make more in one night than the fines is. And like I said, I feel sorry for that. And cool, but we have problems in our neighborhood.
As you know, that one home that you have the problem with has been taken care of, hasn't it?
Well, I think.
The process, it took going to court, it took the city spending money, fines of over ten thousand dollars for them. It finally got its being addressed, and we will continue that same process, going through the same process with court if we need to for any other Airbnb that is illegal in Petoskey.
Well, you were a bad idea to start with.
You understand.
Mr. Smith, can you give me your address again, just so Audrey can put it into the row? Your address? Your address? Thank you.
One one five Division. Ms. Demore?
I just have a quick adjacent question to this conversation that came to me this week from a constituent, and that is this. This whole program with Airbnb setup occurred before I was on council. And the question was, do those licenses that preexist now run with the land? Or are those linked to the current owner? Can somebody answer that for me? Do we know?
I believe it's the person that has signed the agreement. It is not. It is not transfer. Yeah, it does not transfer. It stays with the person that filled out the application. Okay. So they leave.
But they're only in certain geographical areas. So this street on Grove Street is actually part of the central business district, is it not?
I believe that's part of that district.
So it's a geographic boundary, but you're also saying. But it's also attached to the person that owns that duplex as well, the license to operate a short-term rental?
There are zoning districts where it is allowed, and Zach might be able to answer that. I believe this one isn't a zoning district.
Correct, yeah.
So point of clarification, once the person moves, not necessarily this individual, but any person that has this license, once they move, in order for someone to use that location as an Airbnb, they would have to go through a process in order to be able to do so. Is that accurate?
Zach's sake, you said yes.
They would need to get a new vacation rental license.
Okay, so it's owner-linked.
Owner-linked, yes.
Okay.
It doesn't mean that would go there, though. I mean, we have we have a process in place where when one drops out, who does? Do we have a list of people that are requesting?
No, but that's not to say that.
It's illegal to have a list.
When that person can't take that license elsewhere. Either they can't take that short-term rental, and if they bought a different house in the city, they could not take that and use it.
Right. Could not. It's linked to the owner at that location. Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Sir?
Gordon Borland, one twenty-one West Lake Street. I have a question on that. Is is there any review process on this? Or once you get an Airbnb license, you're just set forever? I mean, is there a review of complaints? Is there a review of the standards of the, you know, the building? Is there a review of the parking? No, or is it just you get you get the license and then you're all set forever?
No, it would be a yearly license.
Are are complaints considered in that review?
What are what are ways that people could lose their ability to be a Airbnb?
I guess from my aspect, I'm only one of the people that look at that license, that license application. I look at at the address and is it is it available in the right, the correct district?
But they are inspected by Public Safety for safety reasons, fire extinguishers, whatever, different things in the house to make sure it's safe.
Well, beside you in Public Safety, is there anybody else taking a look at this? Or is that the process of review?
Anybody else, sir?
Look, that's it. I'm not sure what you would need. You have zoning, you have Public Safety.
Okay, so if Public Safety does that, does it take account of things like how many complaints have been made in a given year?
I do not believe. Really, if we're going to go into this, or do you want to have some kind of conversation down the road? Maybe which could be a council meeting agenda item?
Okay.
You're talking to the wrong person here.
Okay.
And also you want Public Safety, you want to see the permits and what have you instead of just.
And if you wish to add a process, then we can look at that as a possibility.
I would be interested for that to be an agenda item if anyone else is so interested.
So be it.
Yep.
Okay, it will be on an agenda either.
Thank you.
One of the next couple, okay?
Sorry to go off.
No, it's totally fine. It's great.
There's no sense in going into this without answers that we nobody has right now. Yeah, we can get those answers, and when we do, we'll have it as an agenda item.
Understood, and thank you.
Yeah. Anyone else wants to speak to city council at this time on any matter other than what's on the agenda? Very good. Next, the city manager updates. And for that, I've turned, by the way, a new city manager, Shane Horn, is happens to be in the audience. Shane, would you stand up and take a bow? So the existing city manager, Mr. El Terry, will give us the update.
Sure. My final report is, at the last city council meeting, I mentioned a meeting we had with this Crimson Group, who is maybe going to buy Michigan, make a block and turn it into something. And that's not going to happen because they did not have their bit of proof, and I understand another group has bought it. I don't know who. So this it just kind of goes on and on and on. This is the third developer we'll be talking to in so far this year on this property. So it's just kind of, they come and go pretty quickly, I think, as they as they assess the property. July fourth, city council meeting will be canceled. So there is the next meeting for city council will be July eighteenth. But also before that happens, we'll have the real city conventions, the work conventions on July eleven, and the city convention is on July thirteenth. So there's a bit happening between now and then. That's it for me.
I want to remind people, our process that we have on July eleventh and July thirteenth, that Monday and that Wednesday, it's a work convention, followed by two days later, a city convention starts at eight o'clock. It's been going on for over a hundred years, probably, at least on this process. We're probably the only. Has been going on for over 100 years, probably, at least on this process for only the only cities in the state of Michigan that I know of, if there's any others that do this process where we have a ward convention with the people in the ward, which each of these represents, meet, will discuss where the city council has been, what's going on, insert and get any nominations if one of those positions are open for somebody running. They also elect up to 15 delegates to show up for the city convention, which is held at the fairgrounds on Wednesday at eight o'clock, two days later. Those 60 people will come together. And there's also people in the back audience with this. And it gives them the opportunity to hear the summary. It's kind of like the state of the state of the city from me, as well as any nominative questions that I can answer or we will get answers for, as well as nominations for who's running for mayor during the fall of November. I hope that you take the opportunity to participate in your ward convention. Like I say, this is real unusual. The reason it stopped is because nobody would show up. I looked this up and it said that it went away from cities because nobody in the cities would show up. So it became a situation where if you wanted to run for office, you simply took a piece of paper and had 20, 30 people sign a petition for you to run and get on the ballot. This brings people together to have the opportunity to discuss if you have questions for Derek in Ward Two or Tina in Ward One. It gives you an opportunity to ask direct questions. And we do come back with the information and report back to city council. So we do have something to discuss if there are some problems or situations that you'd like to be addressed. So I hope that you participate in this process because it's a real healthy, great city. This is something that's unique to Bataski. Ms. Walker?
May I may I also mention, thanks, that this year it'll be Ward One and, excuse me, Ward Two and Ward Four for reelection. And this is the last year of the two-year cycle of electing city council folks. And next year it will be on an every three-year cycle. Can you remind me, Mayor, is our, is the mayor position up for reelection this year or next year?
Two years, this year.
Okay, excellent.
Two-year terms, a two-year term rather than the one year that's been for ever.
Thank you.
So I hope you participate. Any other questions or comments?
Thanks, Mayor. I have this question for Al. Just to clarify, the bid being rejected that was by the owner, there wasn't, the owner was rejecting the bid. You said the bid was rejected or the city, how did that process happen? What do you, what do you mean by rejection?
I missed something.
We, to make the bid to purchase.
Oh, no, whoever was selling, the person selling Michigan Maple Park, they're not accepted off.
Right, okay. Right, that's a clarification. And then the question about the relationship for these developers that will reach out to the city just to, what is that process? But how is the city involved in that, that part of dealing and?
Developers that come to the city to find out how the city feels, basically about tips, voluntary tips, and giving them some kind of tax abatements. They have the city planner, you know, they have DPW, I have myself, and maybe others involved. As far as discussing where the city as a whole, where council, would this council receptive to things like tips and that type of stuff? Just looking for information, you know, and how, what the, what the process would be, if they want to do one development or another. It goes through planning commission. How does it go through planning commission? What if they need a tip? How's that go? Where you start with the brownfield development, which is up at the county? And, you know, what the whole process would be, how, how long it might take.
Got it. Thank you. Yep.
Mr. Wagner. Quick comment and request. So the ward conventions, I think we get some notes from the city to help us kind of make sure we cover up on all the key points. Open positions like the ward, or like the zoning board over on there. This, last year, two years ago, we had openings for the compensation committee, which was new, and my neighbor, Mr. Borland, out here stepped up based on the announcement at our ward convention that there was an opening and he ended up chairing that for us, so. I think that's a great, great opportunity to reach out.
Will you be doing the summary or will?
I think I'll be doing the summary.
I think so, too. Very good. Anyone else? Anyone else wish to speak to council regarding the city managers' updates? Sure.
Okay. I will wonder if there's a way that our small town can promote this small-town process by maybe having the city convention signs posted outside of those buildings, those host locations, say, the week prior to get the participation. If you're not coming to these meetings or if you're not maybe accidentally looking through the city website, you may not know about this and I think that we'll have to ask who's, that we should maybe, it doesn't matter, sign each other in some public places that are gonna draw people to those meetings.
I think.
Can you do that?
I don't do that. Somebody else might be able to.
Yes, city staff will get that. They'll look into that. Sarah?
We have to go to the schools and see if they're allowed us to put one on phone.
Yeah.
What kind of signs you would have, where you put them?
A map that more than copy express, we could make like a template, and I would be willing to pay for mine for my ward convention, just to get like a template. I would think that you would have the ward meeting, the ward convention meeting, and then right underneath that, the, the city convention, just to cover both of them, and then those could be reused, those corrugated pally yard signs.
We can find something.
Probably won't be reused because the dates change.
Sure. We can find something.
Okay.
Thank you.
But I don't think you should be paying for it yourself because that puts, that puts the lead on other city council members that may or may not be able to afford it. I don't, I just don't think the city will take care of it. We have funds. Okay. Next, so the appointment, that's consideration of an appointment to the downtown management board. I'm bringing forward to you today the name of Megan DeWitt. Megan DeWitt is, was on Hill Street. She's wishes to be on the downtown management board to be a voice for nonprofit organizations in the downtown Bataski and assist the DMV with the promotion, preservation, and planning of the business district. She's been here 11 years. She's a lifetime city resident of Bay Harbor, Bayview. She's a leader in the culture assessment of the downtown management, just the business district. And she believes that her leadership at Crooked Tree can lean, lend to helping with the downtown management boards of future mission and vision. She's a member of the Bataski Sunrise Rotary. And she's also the treasurer of the Bataski High School Ski Team Boosters. She's got kids and several kids that attend Bataski School Systems and now feels she has the time to donate her time to this valuable opportunity. So I bring to you her name and ask that you possibly give me a motion or a second to put her on the board.
So moved.
Support it. I have a motion from Mr. Moore and a second from Mr. Wagner. Any other discussion, council? Ms. Black, would you do the role?
Moore?
I.
Wagner?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes. Megan, would you stand up so we all know who you are?
Thank you.
I kind of told her she had to come, not really, but said we'd love to have it when you come because that way people get an idea of who you are, that you are a person, is that something named out of the phone book we pull. But thank you for volunteering and I'm sure you'll bring a lot of help with working with the DMV. We've got a great board. We'd be working with Becky. She will be getting back with you very, very soon. Very soon. I think we have a meeting tomorrow night, so you guys can talk here at the break. Okay. Next, that was you've all been waiting for. We're at the old business's second discussion of possible adoption of a proposed zoning ordinance that would amend sections 400 and 401 of Appendix A to remove housing barriers. And for that, I'm gonna turn it over to city manager.
Sure, and I'll just turn it over to Zach Sample, our city planner. This will be the second time we discuss this issue. City council could take action if they so desire.
There've been multiple letters sent.
Multiple letters received, comments and things.
There's a lot of questions. Shall we first? Do city council, let's see what, what are your questions about this? This, Ms. Demore?
It seems like green should be on, but red is on. So I've had a lot of questions over the last two weeks, so bear with me and I'm happy to take turns with others, but I understand that, let's talk first about the two-unit portion of this. And it's my understanding that it's now proposed that the review will be done by Zach instead of the planning commission. And I see where in the revision, it incorporates section 1600 regarding height, bulk, density, et cetera, that's included. And I also see where it incorporates section 1704 regarding parking in the revised edition. And per Zach, it's my understanding that this very important section 1717 standards of review will still apply. And for purposes of the audience, let me explain what, just an overview of what section 1717 is, and that is where who's ever deciding about the two-unit structure will consider factors, I'm gonna just give you an overview, not all of them, like whether the lot size is adequate for two units, whether the location accommodates unique lot features that are like environmental, like vegetation, topography, historical structure, scenic views. Another consideration under 1717 is traffic. Another is buffering, screening regarding adjacent properties. So those are examples of what is in 1717. So when I reviewed this, in the process of moving the consideration of two units from section 402 to 401, I don't see any reference in 401 to section 1717 that I just kind of gave an overview of, nor are those criteria listed. So can you speak to what's happened to 1717?
Section 1717 outlines the special, the uses permitted to special conditions that are ultimately approved by planning commission. So while those might be some of the things that would look, you would be looking at overall, and that's kind of the, at the intent of the the, I guess, restrictions that the planning commission created for those units. I don't think it'd be fair to say that it is, those are pulled, are it's referencing 1717 wouldn't be correct because that references that the planning commission looks at it and that is not the intent of this ordinance amendment. The intent of this would be that it would be an administrative review based kind of on those sort of things that the, the planning commission would kind of look at, and that's where the, the spirit of the restrictions came from.
Sure, I understand that. So a direct reference to 1717 wouldn't make sense because that pertains to the planning commission. Having said that, is there a reason we wouldn't list those important criteria as part of your review of that process?
They, they are listed under it would be, it would be the proposed eight under 401.
But they're not listed here.
But those are, that's why I was saying the spirit of those is kind of outlines in there.
Okay, so the bottom line is they're not gonna be included, basically, unless.
It still has the restrictions, but I guess not those exact ones. It's not verbatim, if that's your question, no.
Yeah, that's my question. And then also, in the, moving those two units dwellings from section 402 to 401, I don't see any reference to section 1718 either, which provided a process indeed in front of the planning commission for public input. So will public input no longer be a consideration relative to two units under your consideration?
That would be correct. It's similar to how single-family homes are set up now where it's all administrative.
So no public input would be permitted, correct? Okay, thank you very much. And then, Mr. Murray, if I may call you Jim. Jim, what is your view of the legality of requiring an owner to occupy the residence for six months out of the year? I guess twofold question. Is that legal and second, your view on enforceability?
Let's work backwards.
Okay.
Enforceability is tricky. I mean, we've already talked about it, like the property entering and getting proof about occupancy, about who's in there. So enforcement is, is challenging. I mean, I'll be honest, public safety isn't out there knocking on the door, seeing if people are residing or someone else is residing. So sure, that, that's a universal problem, probably not even unique to this. Just a common problem. Your other question was what the.
As part of the ADU, sorry, I shifted to ADUs and didn't say so. So part of the ADU setup is that the main house has to be occupied for six months out of the year, owner occupied. And so my question is, is that, is that something legally we can mandate that someone occupied that residence for six months?
Well, because they're seeking, you know, the ADU, which they don't have a right to without following your ordinance. It's not constitutional right. You get an ADU in every home.
Okay.
They would agree or not agree. If they don't want to reside in a home, then they don't have to reside in a home, but they're not gonna get the ADU. So I mean, I think it's lawful to impose that condition. I'm not suggesting that six months is better than three or nine, you know, that's for this, that's for the planning commission and Zach and all of you to weigh in on.
Okay. And then can you speak to deed restrictions? So I actually think in this context, the deed restrictions are a good thing. But my question is whether they're legal and enforceable. So what's the consideration for the deed restriction here and?
Yeah, that's probably a good question. This is not a typical deed restriction. Normally, that's just a contract between sometimes the two neighbors or buyer and seller or something. But in this case, I think the consideration would be the fact that you are getting an ADU. And therefore you are giving something up and you're, you want to memorialize it. So it's unique. I didn't find any case law exactly on point, but I, I think it is more reasonable than not. It would be upheld because it's a voluntary restriction. So, and I think someone asked one time, well, can an owner just unwind it, so to speak? Well, no, I mean, they're, they would be in violation of both the ordinance, even without the deed restriction. They'd be in violation of the city zoning ordinance. You can't have a condition and then just ignore it. So the condition is to have the deed restriction. The condition is to use it for the requisite time period and so forth. So I don't think you can just unwind it. I noted in the ordinance, it says on a form approved by the city, and I don't think one's been prepared yet. I, I have not prepared one and I haven't reviewed one. But it could possibly have language that says it can't be amended without consent of the city. And clearly, if you're not having your ADU, you could get rid of the deed restriction. Because it says it right in the ordinance, proposed ordinance.
So not to put you on the spot, because I don't, I don't know that you researched this, but in terms of that form, then you would want to see some real specific language in there, in that city form.
Well, yeah, I wouldn't want to have a, a form that made no sense. I mean, it, it should have some teeth to it and some meaning consistent with the ordinance.
Okay.
But it's not for the owner just to say, well, I've decided I'm not doing an ADU and therefore I'm gonna terminate it. I think it should require notice to the city and so their record's clear, this property doesn't have an ADU. So if Zach gets a call and they said, is this property permitted, if it was yesterday, but the owner says today it isn't, staff would know.
Okay. I have more, but go ahead, take a turn.
Mr. Shields? Oh, by the way, clarification, clarification question is with K in proposed language for page three of our proposed language. K says ADU connects C and one and a half stories and 16 feet or the height of the principal structure, whichever is less. I think I misunderstood it in our last meeting. So let me, so what I'm thinking, it means, that means, so if a situation where there is an ADU above a garage, it's starting at the top of the garage level to the ADU can't be 16 feet, or is it? It's starting at the top of the garage level to the ADU can't be sixteen feet, or is it from bottom of the garage? From the bottom of the garage to that top of the ADU unit can't be above sixteen feet? Does that make sense?
I would measure from average grade, the same as, as the zoning ordinance outlines measuring height for any other principal structure. I would do the same, do it the same way there.
Yeah, so I wasn't super clear, sorry. Uh, the, the AD, ADU unit itself, not including the garage. You'd measure the, the height of the, the apartment.
I would, I would measure the whole structure.
You'd measure the whole structure?
Yes.
Okay. So would that, in your, uh, my question is then, would that rule out a lot of ADUs in top of garages? Uh, if they can't be above sixteen feet?
I would, I would say that in existing structure, it would, it would be possible.
In existing structure, that someone could put a garage, construct a garage with a modern law suite and then use that as an ADU.
It's possible, yeah.
Okay.
Ms. Demore.
So Zach, I'm back to you now. Um, some of the questions I've had are about people who have. Existing garage apartments or other existing units that could be considered an ADU. So what's the status of these? Is there any written criteria to clarify what will be grandfathered in, what won't?
As far as I know, I mean, I'm sure there's ones out there, ADUs out there. I wouldn't consider them. I don't have an inventory of them, so, and I've not heard any reports or complaints or anything like that, so.
Keep in mind, if, if it was unlawful at the time, it's great, but it doesn't ever become lawful just because it existed. So grandfathering is an interesting concept. When people say, well, it's been there, it may have been there for ten years. I always say, big deal. Tell me what happened ten years ago. Did you get approval? Was it lawful ten years ago? So you really have to take them case by case. So if it was lawful ten years ago, then it's grandfathered.
Well, you really, thank you, Jim, because you're speaking really to the point of my question is like, what's going to be the process? Well, whatever is already out there that may or may not. Be approved, or I mean, I'm guessing there's a lot happening. What's the process or in place and criteria and that sort of thing for sorting that all out?
Yeah, well, I would, um, the burden of proof would be on that, I would argue, that if it were existing. Other than that, I would treat it as if it were new.
So, okay, do we have, we don't have an enforcement mechanism in place for this, there to say currently?
Just, we, we do. I mean, every, um, Zach, city manager, all. Department of Public Safety, Department of Public Works can issue municipal civil infractions. And they're authorized, if there's a violation of zoning ordinance or really any city code, then city, we have designated city officials that can enforce it.
Yeah, wasn't that the purpose of the part-time person we were gonna, I heard that, that's what I understood, okay.
Doesn't mean it wasn't happening, right? Okay.
It doesn't mean that the process is not happening, you know, this person would step in to assist this process.
Okay.
To strengthen it.
Okay. And then my last question is for you, Jim, relative, I had asked a question at another meeting in the context of lumber laws about.
Loss at Lumber Square.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Loss at Lumber Square about whether or not we could put conditions on funding support. I'm not posing that question now. Um, I'm posing it in the context of an ADU permit. Um, under that section MCL one, two, three, dot four, one, one, four. Can the issuance of an ADU permit equal a voluntary incentive to set workforce housing rates? I'm kind of looking at this with concerns about, does this really lead to affordable housing? And I'm questioning, is there any way to put any mechanisms in place that are available to us? To make sure that what we're trying to do actually generates affordable housing as opposed to just producing density?
Interesting question, but I don't think this addressed that at all. Right? I mean, the, when we went to the planning commission, it wasn't talking about incentives or to increase, you know.
Right, but you're here.
Consistent with section four eleven. And that, that question came up, but, um, to apply, you're not suggesting you apply it to this, to the ADUs.
I'm asking, I'm asking.
Well, put it this way, I'm not probably prepared to say whether you put it or didn't, but I'm prepared to say it can't just be added now.
Of course.
It would be kind of a big change to have to go back to planning officials. And to be consistent with the statute, and I think you cited it, are you talking about one twenty, MCL one twenty-three, four eleven?
It's one you cited, yes.
You know, you need to make findings that that was the goal of this ordinance, and it was consistent with the statute. So it's possible.
Okay.
But I didn't look at it because it didn't come to me this way. It just came as a ADU.
Thank you.
The same with Lumber Square, you know, at the time, I don't really know how they're going to do that project, but if it meets the definition of four eleven, then. It can qualify.
Thank you.
Who wants to go?
No, you did.
Oh. A comment on enforcement, actually, that, um. I think it was a year ago, maybe, or two, two years ago, our public safety department took it upon themselves to look for, um. Zoning for light, for whatever. And Director Breed presented, I think it was last year, statistics on the number of situations that they found that weren't just complaint driven. That was significantly, significantly higher than the year before. And, um, so I hope we'll, we'll continue to give reports on that as well as adding the halftime persons, what we had discussed because. It was one of my favorite meetings, actually, because not only did, were the numbers high, but they were handled so compassionately. And, um, you know, when there was an issue that was a complaint driven or not, and somebody had a long, long grass in their front yard, or bushes not being trimmed. They knocked on the door, they found out that somebody is incapacitated, they can't take care of it, and they handled it again very compassionately, so. So there is, there is enforcement going on with some of this. I'm not sure how, how we could ever enforce all of it, but. Ms. Walker.
And just to remind citizens and residents of the city of Vataski that that does very complaint driven, oh, thank you, Zach. It's a very complaint driven, so international property code maintenance, you can file a complaint anonymously or. Or presenting your name and information to, on the city website. Um, and then somebody from, usually Chief Breed will follow up with you in regards to your concern of international property code maintenance.
Mr. Walker.
We do that all the time. Um, it, one, I just want to add a couple of considerations, I guess, that are observations before we go to public comment. One is that. There's a process that I, I hope our new city manager might bring some new perspective on, which is notification. About things like award conventions, about things like notification that we're going to be making changes in town. My side, and, and we've gone above and beyond in some situations, like at the, at the college. There was an issue and went beyond what was required to knock on doors, to send out notices. The college did that, we did it, and it was still kind of last minute or late in the game that all of a sudden people heard what was going on. And, um. I, I, I believe, I know Mr. Horn has had experiences with, with two, two locations with that, creating apps for city members. So going beyond, you know, maybe putting a sign in front of our locations to announce these things. I have requested it before, and I've been, I don't know that there's easy answers, but this whole notification of this and other things, to see the number of letters we've received. And our, our, um, planning commission. I think it was close to a year that they've put into this. It was many, many, many months of talking ADUs, putting a lot of thought into it. The process as it stands was open to public comment, and I'm not sure there was much. And then it came to city council for another couple of readings and a chance for comment, and it was only in the last couple of weeks that we, we received a lot of letters. And we take them seriously, but there's, there's something in the process to me that's not working, and it, it maybe. We don't get the Vataski News Review anymore. I still do, but it's far down to two days a week.
Yeah.
And requiring that we all go to the city's, um, website for information like this, it's not just coming out. But I think those are the two notifications, I'm not sure exactly. And, and maybe it's just outdated a bit, and is a separate, a separate topic, I, I hope we can. Have our, as our city staff, look into that. I hope Mr. Horn has some experience he can bring. It did, it feels like there's something that's, that's not working quite right that we can, we can pay some attention to, because we want to hear from the, our taxpayers, from the people we represent. And, and we're also, the last point is that we're in transition. When Zach came in and took some of us over for maybe, and is doing a great job at, at picking up in, in the interim. And Shane's coming in, his first day was today, and so we've got some great things going on, but. Um, I, I think there's something that could have been lost in translation along the way, and it's causing concerns, but. I know we're doing the right things, um, for our citizens.
One reason it's set up, that the process of first reading, second reading, and then possible motion passing. Is giving the people the opportunity to know what's going on, and to give you a chance to come and speak if you wish, either at that first reading. The public hearing or the second reading, which is now on this. So, Ms. Walker.
Thank you, Mayor. And just to kind of play up what Brian shared, um, the planning commission actually is reviewing citizen engagement and how to. What kind of like all ideas coming forward to evaluate, in the same time that they were evaluating these changes to ordinances to. Remove barriers to housing and, and create new housing potentially. They're also reviewing citizen engagement, and what, what does that look like, and what are, and there was some great brainstorming on planning commission, and I believe this was in the month of April. Um, on those ideas. Um, so it, it is in motion, and it, it was, um. Really came out of that situation with North Central Michigan College and their master plan, and the citizens on Howard Street feeling really disengaged from that process, so. I'm very hopeful that, as you explained, we are going through transition and, and anytime there's an opportunity for myself as a, as a ward representative and a city council member. I'm always writing down the list of people that have ever contacted me to make sure that they get invited to meetings, and there's, there's a little bit of due diligence on the, on, on behalf of your elected officials as well. To make sure that we are canvassing our neighbors, we are talking to, to our residents and giving them the opportunity to be actively engaged. So whether that's text message or group chats, or, or just, you know, door knocking, um, those are, those are good, and we want our citizens to be engaged in these processes, so, thank you.
Ms. Demore.
As a counterpoint, though, to these comments, it's important to notice that the change we're looking at is eliminating. Seventeen eighteen, which is a provision that allows for public comment. So we're taking away the ability of people to comment. In the process we're looking at right now, seventeen eighteen will be gone. So I just want to give that to everybody for your consideration.
Mr. Zach, did you address that?
It, it's not that seventeen eighteen would be gone. That would still apply to special conditions within each zoning district. It's just removing the special conditions on the multifamily.
Correct.
And for the ADUs, that would be, be moved to a permitted use as it would any other permitted use, and those often cases, uh, single-family residences.
Right, it existed under four oh two, it will not exist under four oh one. Fair?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Before going public, runway processes, is there a motion? Is there some action the city council wants to discuss? On this? Mr. Shields.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, I'll find it. Approve the proposed ordinance amendments to remove some barriers to the housing, uh, the housing barriers in R one and R two, single-family districts.
I'll second the motion, Mayor.
Okay. That now opens it up for possible discussion from the public, okay? There's a process in place that we need to stay with. I will call on you guys after there's discussion by council. I'll go back to you and come back. Anybody else? Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor, and. Uh, so I think it's important to start out by saying that, uh. We share the value of wanting to protect the character and charm of our community, our town. And I, I sit here wanting to protect our town by needing to address the housing crisis and allow for more compact neighborhoods. And I think increasing, this is the goal of this, is to increase availability of housing units and restrict barriers. And so, in order to respect, uh, council, you know, I, I've seen, I'm, I agree with you, that was our, that is removing that, that, uh, such, that. For extra steps, that's how I see it, removing extra steps, which are serving as a barrier to, uh. Some, a barrier to increasing housing availability. And thus I, uh. I see allowing, uh, a mixed, uh, this, this ordinance allowing a, a greater mix of economic diversity in our community. And I, I really don't think that the changes will be significant in the path to charm of our town. So that's, that was, uh, you know, what's leading me in support of these, of these ordinance changes. And I think it's a necessary part of keeping our community livable, uh, and thus a vibrant place.
Ms. Demore.
So of course I haven't had an opportunity to hear from the folks in the audience, but I'm only going to explain my feeling at this point. In all that we do regarding housing, one of my overarching goals is affordability. Some input that I received from constituents this week and the week before regarding this proposed ordinance amendment links density with affordability. I would consider supporting increased density where it's linked by evidence to increased affordability. There is no such evidence here. I hope that's the case, but there's no evidence of it. Density alone, to my mind, isn't a positive. And in fact, there are many examples of increased density leading to developer opportunities, nothing against developers. But associated increased prices and decreased affordability. If our goal as a council is affordability, I say let's act on that goal and establish a policy. That guides all of our housing decision-making with that goal in mind. I have a lot of respect for the planning council's commission. I'm new to this gig in January, and I have a lot of respect for their efforts. But for the reason I just stated, and the following reasons, at this point, and again, I'm going to listen. Uh, I will not support this proposed ordinance amendment as currently configured. These are the reasons, in addition to that I just stated. Um, I think that seventeen seventeen criteria regarding suitability of locations for two-unit residents. Needs to be included in writing as a required consideration. For my part, I agree with my colleagues. I think public comment and input is extremely important to democracy. Even when any one of you in the audience may disagree with my perspective. I think respectful disagreement is very important, and I think that process for public input is being eliminated here. The bulk of the input that I've received from constituents is the three-month rental period is too short. It's too close to vacation rental periods and doesn't really meet the needs of year-round residents that desperately need housing. Um, as Jim might have suggested, I don't see much of this as actually being enforceable. Things could be very difficult to enforce. As we're already hearing, we're having difficulty enforcing, uh, these use of vacation rentals that are unlicensed. Um, and finally, it's unclear to me which existing garage apartments or other ADU-like structures. Will be either grandfathered in or how that will all be assessed, and I don't see anything in writing. To provide guidance. To me, that could result in confusion and further enforcement challenges. Having said all that, I hope I'm wrong. I hope it provides affordable housing if it passes here. But for the record, those are my concerns, and I thank you for listening.
Sir, could you address that second one regarding grandfather? How that would happen?
As far as uh, an existing accessory dwelling unit being grandfathered in?
Right.
The, that's, it's difficult to say because there's really no.
ADUs are, if there's an existing dwelling unit right now, and it's existing, if someone's renting it, it's illegal.
Thank you.
Okay, so there's no grandfathering, it's illegal.
In R one, you can have one, one residence in, in a, in a lot. So it would be illegal.
Now, if somebody has a building that they want to turn into an ADU that's not being rented, that's different. Now, you can turn it into a, a rental unit. That's why sometimes I'm not sure people are talking about a garage or building they have, but they would now like to make into an ADU. And they could do that, but if there's someone renting out an accessory dwelling unit, right now it is currently illegal. So you cannot grandfather that in.
Follow that piece.
That doesn't mean it's not going on, it just means it's not legal.
Shields. Mr. Wagner.
That's okay, one, one point of clarification, I I believe, in a, in our action plan and in our master plan. And um, and it could be that Housing Board could comment on it, but it goes beyond just affordable housing to housing and twenty-three hundred units needed in the north of Michigan. And that the more, and I get again, I'm Andrew's here, hopefully, either the public comment or now could comment on, there is a connection. And if we give more housing period, that'll open up more affordable housing, workforce housing at all levels. And so it's not just, I, as a council, I don't believe we're just here to focus on affordable.
My big problem is with the three and six months, I I feel uh, it should be. I feel that that three to six month situation, I feel it should be six months versus three months. It covers too much of an ability for somebody to rent something for seasonal, uh, making a, a killing off of June, July and August. And it sits the rest of the time, and that does not address what we are looking for, and that is for long term rental. We're not looking for short term rentals, we're looking for uh, a stable place for somebody to live that works in Petoskey. Yeah. Or in the area that has the opportunity to live here. I think we should look at changing that from three months to six months, personally. If that's the case, I would recommend we send it back to the planning commission for those changes, because that is, is this considered a small change, Jim?
Let's see how far you get with it. Um, kidding aside, I would say this, you know, if it's some de minimis change, but probably that's a big enough change. If if you're really, you're heading in the direction.
Right.
As little changes when it gets to council, no harm, no foul. So let's see how far you get with whether changes where you are, but if you said three to six months, you know, it's a pretty meaningful thing. Probably before it went away, yeah, because again, this is second reading and and that, I wasn't here last week, but I didn't see where that came up.
Mr. Wagner.
My question. Yeah, thank you, my, my reference to the transition period we're in, and um, I'm guessing, Zach, you can tell me, were you in those discussions where three months was determined? To be the right number?
There was some pretty lengthy discussion on the overall time, and it, it had been bounced around, is it a year, is it six months, is it three months? And it ultimately came out to three.
Okay, and so, understanding why three months was arrived, that would help me. And um, and if you have that answer, it's like, great, if not, I mean, I, whether, whether go back to the planning commission or, I don't know, tabling would be the right thing to give it another few weeks so we could get more clarification. Um, I mean, I'd, I'd be, I'd be happy with that because it, that was the one question I had, is on three months versus six months. And six, six feels like a better answer to me. Ms. Walker, it's not just seasonal workers, three months, it's a more permanent solution.
Ms. Walker.
Um, so legal counsel just said that six months would be uh, enough of a change to send it back to the planning commission. So if they've been in discussion for the past year and a half on accessory, it's eighteen months. Um, and actually dating back to twenty fifteen, when we started talking about accessory dwelling units, so it's seven years later. Um, how, how is it determined that a number requires going back to the planning commission? If we decide in this public hearing, in this second reading, to change a number from three to six to make a motion move forward? I, I'm at a little bit of a loss.
It's, it's due process.
Okay.
It's just, and again, it's, you can't define, um, the, the public can't do process and property owners to know that um, it's going to be six months. So maybe everyone stayed home because they thought it was gonna be three months, they're happy with that. If they've known it was six months, they've come to the meetings. And so, you know, you need to be put on notice about what you're gonna pass. You can't put on a piece of paper, it's three months, then all of a sudden say we're changing it to six months.
Well, that's.
Question is, but does it violate your due process? You know, is it enough to say, hey, timeout, give the public again an opportunity to come in and, and suggest they might have a complaint or a support? Um, but Lindsay, it's a, it's a tough call, you know, when, because don't forget this, um, you as a city council members can initiate zoning ordinance amendments yourself, right?
Yes, yeah, we've been told that we can do that, yes, correct. Right.
So my overriding suggestion is make sure we have due process. And whether it goes to planning commission, I mean, I'm not sure where you're heading, because right now with the motion on the floor.
Yeah.
If there's a motion table, and I've told you before, I'm not a Roberts rules fan, but you do kind of follow it. You know, that'd be a secondary emotion, which hasn't been made yet, that would have to be considered before you get back to primary.
But in the context, no, sorry, but in the context of a public hearing, this is the second reading of a public hearing. So why wouldn't you be able to change something in the public hearing process?
It's late in the game. And again, everyone's been thinking it's on a piece of paper that's three months, and now you're saying, well, we'll just make a motion and change it to six months. I ca- I'm always watching, you know, I err on the side of watching to have more due process than less. It's always a sensitive topic, I understand, you probably think it's not a big deal, maybe it isn't. But, you know, you don't want it, it's set aside by some court because they said they were simply, they've, not that it was a bad idea, but just not enough due process.
Thank you.
Mr. Shields.
It's a close call, I'm not, you know, I'm not swearing that it isn't enough due process, but it has never been in a paper that it was proposed to be six months, it's always been three months. So if there's a proposal now, that's new.
And that's not part of the public hearing process?
Strikes me like it's a, it's a little more material than than just a de minimis change.
Thanks.
Mr. Shields.
Again, I'm a voice support for the three months, and I want to remember or recall that our community is a very tourist dependent community. And we are, are part of our goals, increasing, increasing housing units and availability in our community is to support our business community, which needs workforce housing. And so that can include a three month seasonal workforce opportunity that an ADU could provide. Uh, and again, I I think we, again, we're looking at phasing this in incremental steps. And so I, I am not concerned, in fact supportive of the three months uh, prohibition.
Mr. Wagner, something to say?
Nothing additional, I, I, I'd love to hear from the public.
Mr. Moore. I think.
I'm interested to hear from the public.
Okay, I want to give you the first.
Thank you.
I'm supposed to give you first.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we'll be orderly about this, full name, full address, come up, speak at the mic, and. Mr. Gordy has his hand.
Gordon Borland, one twenty-one West Lake Street. I have a couple of of concerns and, to be fair, uh, I was out of the country for the hearing. Uh, and I was probably the first part, I was probably still in Florida. I did send something, my wife sent something to, to Mr. Shield about, and I'm glad to see it's in here. This should not even be considered if you share a driveway, because you're talking a situation that's unbelievable. Um, a couple of things, and and I'm gonna start out by saying, I, I uh, I have been on planning commission and I applaud their efforts to come up with affordable housing, I really do. I just have some concerns based upon my twenty-one years here in Petoskey and having been on the planning commission and been aware of situations around, uh, around the city. I'm gonna just make a statement. Affordable housing should not be substandard. I guess this, should not be substandard. Just for us to provide work, workplace or workforce housing should not mean that that housing is not something that we ourselves would live in. I know of one, and I, I, I will not, you know, say, I know of one where workforce was jammed into houses and stuff, and and it was way substandard. That should not happen. Um, I don't see on here where six hundred square feet, where anything is defined. What are the, if if I wanted to do this, and I had a structure on my property, what would be the minimum requirements in that six hundred feet that I would have to have so that it would be livable?
No, that, it is, continue.
Okay, I, I'd like to know, you know, what those are, and then the other thing is, um, okay, so I got, I got my checklist, I, I get this. Who checks up on me? And is this, and this really is close to the, you know, the Airbnb thing that we were talking about before. Once I get this, is it in perpetuity, as, as, as long as I own the property? Um, and is it subject to uh, inspection and how often? And I think that's really relevant when we talk about the three months or the six months, because boy, I'll tell you, if you're moving people in and out of places every three months, um, you better be checking on, you know, the property and stuff. And and, you know, if if you, once you get it, if if you just have it and it's there and you're not inspected, you know, periodically, yearly, I don't know, you know, whatever it is, then I think we have a problem, because again, I'm just gonna take it back to affordable should not be substandard. Density, I'm hearing the word density, and I know that that's increasing the density on the property, but in the six hundred square uh, foot unit, how many people can be put in there? Um, and if there are, you know, let's, let's suppose I've got a job and, jeez, I, I really could save money by putting my buddy in there and then my buddy has a buddy and whatever, and pretty soon I've got a bunch of people in there, and everybody has a car. And I know, you know, you, you've got the, the number of spaces and stuff, but my gosh, that just kind of suddenly spills out onto the street. Um, is there, are there, you know, along with the idea of the minimum requirements for that unit, are there maximum requirements for the number of people that could be in there? And I think, you know, um, I think it's a noble idea. And I think with some um, tightening up of restrictions and and making sure that we have somebody that enforces those, I think it could be a great idea. But I also see the uh, the possibility for abuse. If if we just go with the idea and we're gonna let it happen, and we give somebody the license to have an ADU, we don't check up on them, and then that next thing, you know, people are living in in substandard conditions and the neighbors are are absorbing, you know, problems from that too. So I don't disagree with the, with the concept, I just think that there needs to be a little bit of tightening up. And uh, my last thing, six months, I think ought to be the minimum. You, you start having turnovers in three months and you're beating up property and, and I think you're uh, you're looking at problems, thank you.
Zach, six sixty square, six hundred square feet.
Is for the single family.
Could you address what he's talking about with six hundred square feet?
So that would be the building footprint, and uh, that would be the total area contained within the exterior foundation or framing area taken on a horizontal plane at the largest floor level of a building or an accessory building, exclusive of terraces, patios, decks, steps, awnings, or non-permanent canopies.
If anything, that would be ADU would have to be brought up to building standards, is that right?
Emmett County Building would, would be aware of all of these, and and they have occupancy loads and sizes I'm not aware of, but they have their own restrictions.
They have footings that, you, you know, if your, your garage has no footings at all, it would require, would it require a person to put footings into this and stuff?
I would imagine so, but I'm not the building inspector.
I would expect that, it would, if it's been lived it. Next question is, who's checking on this? Uh, if you had a question of who would be the one in the city that would be following up on this inspections, et cetera?
I, I follow up on every zoning permit issue.
Mr. Murray.
Well, I was just gonna comment, because it, it is, this would run with the law. I mean, this approval, this really like, you, you know, a single family home, my home. Um, if Zach approves my, my zoning permit and I build my house, sure, he checks on it one time, but I mean, next year, um, I may not be living there, and staff probably isn't even knocking on the door to say who's, who's there. So when you say enforcement, no, there's nothing in enforcement that makes uh, staff come and check. It would be a violation if it, you know, I'm not saying people can violate it, but it is hard to enforce. And it's no different than all of our homes at Petoskey, that no one's knocking on your door to see what you're doing.
It'd be a public health situation, uh, complaint driven to public safety or.
Driven, um, public safety kind of finds it once in a while when they run to a fire run, and we, we've had that where then you find that the windows aren't ingress and egress or the height, I don't know how they got by the county, um, but that has happened. So it happens in different ways.
Okay, Ms. Walker.
Um, Mayor, I think there's a little bit of confusion, because six hundred square feet is the minimum requirement for a single standing family home. Four hundred square feet is the minimum for a accessory dwelling unit. And if we, once again, going back to like, the whole thing about something being under special conditions versus a permitted use, there will only be allowed ten permitted ADUs a year, and they'll have to go through a pretty rigorous process. So I'm assuming that the follow-up falls on the, the director of planning and zoning.
Go ahead, sir.
I just wanted to note that it, ADU shall not, shall not exceed six hundred square feet. I'm not, the, the minimum would be, would be a building, building department. Unless you're seeing something on.
So six hundred square feet.
Six hundred square feet.
That's the, that's the maximum.
That's the maximum.
Right. What's the minimum?
There isn't one. Look under three nine C. And ADU shall not exceed six hundred square feet. So it has to be less than that, there is no minimum stated. Which will then you're probably getting to your building code restrictions, they're gonna say at a minimum what they might be, what you have to have in a house, bathroom or kitchen, et cetera, which will kick in on some of that. But this does not speak to the minimum size.
I'm sorry, so there's, in two C, the dwelling unit shall have a minimum footprint of six hundred square feet. That's where I was, that's what I was referring to, so that's a, a freestanding, this is not an ADU. This, this is like the freestanding and minimum square feet. And previously, the language was twenty-four by twenty-four, so that's the six hundred square foot. The language that was previously under three C was a min- a, a maximum of four hundred square feet. And now, now six hundred is underneath here, so that's why I'm confused. Because this number, six hundred, just appeared in these notes. It was four hundred square feet at every, every other meeting, four hundred was the number that was discussed.
Well, I thought it was uh, five hundred and eighty's.
No, that was, that's the previous language in this, in um, in two C. And here, at three C, it says six hundred, but I thought the discussion was previously four hundred, so I'm sorry if I, if I modeled the two. But six hundred square feet minimum is for a single family dwelling footprint. But you're saying that the ADU shall not exceed six hundred square feet, it's not four hundred? But you're saying that the ADU shall not exceed six hundred square feet, it's not four hundred. Yes, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak to council at this time?
My name is Marty Maloney, we go for Michigan Street, so there's thirty-six years. Just gonna give my opinion, first of all, I agree with you on communication.
Okay.
There's nobody around where I live, right on Michigan Avenue, knew anything about this. So I'm sure there are some people, but I think communication skills is something that, since there is no capacity to do. Maybe there's some slide we could send out, or I, you know, I'm just bringing it up, I agree with you. Um, I'm responding to the new proposal to add an additional housing unit, you're kind of pretty close to me saying, and we've already agreed on it, but I'm gonna give my opinion to the record.
Has something voted on?
Oh, on Michigan Street where I live, we all have small properties. We are very close together, by adding these ADU-living homes, it would increase the population density, thereby increase car traffic. Noise levels for more concentrated people, pets, and increase our yards, which could also decrease our property values when it comes to resale. We live in town because it is quiet, we have privacy while still being close and know our neighbors, which is so important for safety and for such well-being and sense of unity. Um, I probably know everyone on my block, and the whole neighborhood has turned over, so we have these wonderfully own families. We can have rentals too, but a year-long rentals. If you don't mind going over, welcoming me, if the person coming in the community for a year rental, but for three months, what's what's the point, you know? Uh, I'm talking about affordable housing, I'm not sure this is the answer. To getting more affordable housing, I think it increases the integrity of our neighborhoods. I think it would impact the, I'm probably gonna repeat some of this, I think the increased population density. That would occur thereby decreasing our home values for resale. If I were in a neighborhood and I was looking at my home, and I knew that there was something behind it, I would take that into consideration. Do I want to live next to extra houses and people and car traffic? We already, our car, you know, the street on Michigan Street, it goes down to a single lane, you know? Uh, the car traffic, we already, we live between five house, five schools, so we have a lot of traffic. The noise level, I love where I live, it's very quiet, people are very respectful, everybody owns a dog. We all know each other, if I have a problem, I should say something to them, not as good reception, but we should set it. I think it decreases the integrity of the neighborhood, we all work each morning, don't do renters and not confess to the neighborhood. I know this for a fact, I've lived in many rentals. And they are university towns. So you move in, you rent, you'll get to know your neighbor, you'll go to school, that's not the feel that I'm hoping that could happen. This is an opposition to a person who owns their own home and confessed in the ones in the neighborhood. I have lived in my home for thirty-six years, and although the neighborhood has turned over a lot to junk families, I always go over, greet my old neighbors on each side. Not only to welcome them, but for safety sake, I think it applies about doing that if someone was renting for short term. I don't think downtown businesses would benefit from pushing in more rentals into our neighborhoods, but rather, how about making the top floors of these businesses affordable apartment? Instead of high-end condos or storage. So many of these old, dead buildings could be transitioned to cool downtown living areas, if that is a deal, it was pushing the idea. I am submitting my opinion effectively to the city commission, and whether I still may my neighbors will be affected by this idea, I will not be bothered, and that's for me to address. Maybe some different way of communicating.
Do you have some suggestions for us on how to get ahold of you if you haven't been paying attention to? Things like, how do we, how do we do this with six thousand people?
We used to do, uh, you know, that everybody. I think everybody rather would have moved to you. A lot of us are now retired, so we're not here for part of the year.
Have you attended the city ward conventions at all?
No.
Ah, okay, that's a great opportunity.
Yeah, you know, how you visit my whole neighborhood. To be part of, I went around to the neighborhood, maybe somebody.
And how many of those people showed? Okay, of your whole neighborhood, see?
And I sent them a letter, every single one of them a letter.
But you understand that no matter what we do, this is what?
Well, I'm agreeing with you.
Yeah.
We have a communication, I don't have the answers. I, you know, I don't know what to say, but I just know that a lot of us didn't know anything about this until this week, so. I put it out there.
Yeah.
And I agree with you, I mean, you realize it.
But sometimes to criticize and not have an idea of what to put in its place, that's that's the part that we need help on is, what is?
There must be a different way where we can all communicate, we're not trying to be criticized.
Okay, I thought maybe you had an idea how, because I I think the city has tried a lot of different ways from putting memos into, we have a great website, which. Ten fifteen years ago, we did not have a website, you couldn't go and you couldn't read past minutes, you couldn't read the agenda for tonight. All of the agenda, if you would, to go to the website, was on there, what day, Sarah, two days ago, Thursday? Thursday, so we put everything on the website, you know, um.
Maybe a letter out if you need one, telling them.
Just shields.
Thank you, I I'd like to say thank you, Ms. Maloney Ford, and I commend you for going out and talking to your neighbors and letting me know what you found out and what you heard, I think that's. One of the answers among many that hopefully we pursue for communication is that really they message in, and all of us doing our parts, you did your part for that, so I I just wanna commend you and thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak, no, you spoke?
I had a question that didn't get answered, I asked one of my first questions was what goes into the six hundred square feet? It's families, the fact that it's six hundred feet, but is it like a, does there have to be a bathroom, a kitchen? You know, what has to be in that six hundred square feet in order for it to be?
Zach, could you answer that?
That would be Emmett County Building who would decide what would be habitable.
Okay. To the Emmett County Code. Sir?
I just have a question, so you build an ADU, and um. Does a person owns a property, can they rent their original house and then rent their, you have to live in that property?
Yes.
And you're gonna enforce that somehow, is that an enforceable issue?
Is that an enforceable issue?
Or can they just get up and leave and then rent their house, rent their ADU, and you have lots of wealth?
As enforceable as any other ordinance in the city.
Well, how enforceable is that?
I can't put a number on anything that's enforceable in the city.
Number two, have you really studied the issue of whether this will help downtown or is this gonna help Walmart owners? Means we'll bring in more people downtown, have you studied that? Where where these people are gonna shop and where they're gonna get their goods? Is it gonna really help the downtown? Are we gonna change historic downtown Petoskey, which is a very big city, by just putting more housing in? I mean, have you guys a question?
Are we talking about the downtown or?
Yeah, downtown, any of your ADs.
So you're saying it's gonna?
In a residential area, so we say we're gonna increase the downtown shopping and such, is that really true?
I never said that.
Well, the implication I got from listening to that, so, well, yes, sir, don't get defensive.
Yeah, yeah.
We're asking questions, we don't know.
Yeah.
If you get defensive, that'll just shoot the hole.
Right.
So, the question is, has anybody assessed, well, that's really gonna help the downtown, and how have you assessed that?
Zach?
This is really focused towards housing, the, I mean, the cascading effects of of this reaching out into the economics, I mean, there's, there's studies all over, there's, there's other communities that have seen it. Every, that being said, every community is different, I don't know if it's fair to say we're gonna see a big impact, we would have to have a baseline, I would argue, from there to begin with, so I don't know if that baseline exists right now. That's a little bit outside of my real house, I guess.
Mr. Moore?
Um, just as a kind of point of clarification to Dr. Maloney's question about owner living in the house. The owner is only required to live in the house six months of the year. And the balance of the six months, that house could be rented, is that correct? Do you agree?
Restrictions can't be put on it, that would state that owner occupied has to, you could not rent. How can you rent, I I talked, part of the deal was that you could not. You could not rent. The primary residence of that piece of property with a ADU.
I guess. Can you repeat the question again?
Nine B doesn't imply that you would rent. It says, the property owner shall occupy either the ADU or the single-family dwelling on the property. Except for temporary absences, not to exceed total of six months. And be the primary residence of the property owner. So I think that it's your, you can't rent it, it's your primary.
Yeah. We need to put stronger language in here, that's, I, to me. I would not support this if it's allowed for you to rent. Your primary residence. While having an ADU in the back and definitely should.
And this language, I think, implies that it could be stronger, probably, sure, but.
That it's enforceable the way it is.
But it it is, and again, I'm not saying we we don't enforce or can't enforce. But, you know, who's gonna raise their hand and say that public safety's knocked on their door and say, are you here? We're just checking, because this says you shall not be gone more than six months, and it was a. Couple of people go to Florida here and take vacations, and so the expectation of staff knocking on doors periodically and checking if they're there for six months, free time. I'm not saying you can't do it. You know, some of us may recall when we adopted the International Property Maintenance Code. How challenging that was to dispel the myths that public safety was gonna knock on everyone's door to see if their light bulb was out. You know, we went through that for months, and we and we don't do that, because people don't like that.
Where complaints driven.
Basically correct, and if public safety sees. Ingress, you know, as I said, certain windows, or, you know, if they see things, they they it'll be staff-driven, but. Seems like the pendulum has switched a little bit, and then we're talking a lot about enforcement. So again, I'm not here saying we can't enforce it or won't enforce it, but I'm just trying to be realistic, that we don't do it now, where Zach. Or public safety aren't knocking on doors to see if people are there for, you know, for the six months.
Right. Mr. Wagner? Just a good comment, I guess, it seems like any of us could rent our house for six months. Right, I mean, if if I wanted to go away for for five months and twenty-nine days, I could rent my house, it's not a short-term rental, so. It feels, it seems like the supply is the same way, it's not any different.
Well, we we have, we've talked about this, we have homes in Petoskey where their owner occupied, they're not rented. But guess what, the owners are only there a few weekends here and there. So what do you do with that?
You don't, because it's none of your business.
We have somebody online that was. Oh, I I know they're back. Who answered these questions first? You said, is there somebody online? Let's hear them first.
Hi, this is Allison Patton. Turning my volume down. All right, is is that good?
Yes, yes, loud as you can and full name and full address.
Okay, my name is Allison Patton, six zero two East Lake. You received a letter from me, I know, through uh my word person, Tina Demore, and I don't want to um just reiterate everything that I said there, but I do wanna make some supplemental comments. First of all, I think some of the frustration that council is feeling about why are people raising all these questions now is because the rollout of this. Was not done very well. The e- e- even myself as a lawyer, when I first started seeing this mentioned about, um, you know, careful use of ADUs. Uh, there was no indication in anything that I saw about how the treatment of two families.
Several of the council members are having trouble hearing you, Ms. Patton. It sounds muffled.
Let me try something else. All right, I hope that, is that better?
About the same.
All right, I'm gonna move. Is it better now? No.
Are you there?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, is that better?
Go for it.
Okay, so it, this wasn't rolled out in a very good manner. Um, it 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 took me delving into the existing ordinance provisions to, as a lawyer, to actually understand. All of what was going on here, there's a lot more going on here than just calling it careful use and limited use of ADUs. First of all, we're talking about doing it in R one, R two. There are other zoning districts within the city where these sorts of things might be more appropriate. There is a complete change in the treatment of going from a single-family dwelling and turning it into a two-family dwelling. Taking it out of the ambit of section four oh two, putting it in four oh one. Uh, I I heard the city planners say that, well, that, you know, in so many words, that really isn't such a big change. Um, he's still gonna consider the spirit of the section seventeen seventeen standards, and I'm sorry, but that just isn't how the law works. The way the law works is that you can only consider as a city planner or a planning commission, the factors that the law permits you. To consider, and so what has happened here is that it it is that the city is is proposing to take out of the more. Stringent review of the seventeen seventeen factors and and to put. Converting single-family into two-family, also erection of ADUs into section four oh one. That is not where you get the careful treatment, that is not where you get the full review, that is not where you allow for public input. You do that only when you you treat these as special uses and subject them to section seventeen seventeen standards for review. As well as seventeen eighteen, the opportunity for neighboring properties to come and and address the issue. So it really, and there are some very important pieces of section seventeen seventeen that will be missed if you put this in four oh one instead of four oh two. There's no, gonna be no consideration of topography, vegetation, there's gonna be no consideration of onsite traffic circulation, vehicle storage, no consideration of the location and arrangement on the site. No consideration of adequate buffering and screening, these are all very important things. And I I also want to say that I I really cringe when I hear the word barriers to. And I, I also want to say that I, I really cringe when I hear the word barriers to housing. It's a very pejorative way of just addressing the issue because it makes it sound like anybody like myself and the other residents that you're hearing from, that somehow we are against affordable housing, that somehow we are against diversity. No, we're not. But what we are for is for effectuation of the master plan, which is where we see what the public wants and the public as a whole, as we see in the master plan is neighborhoods for all and all includes us too. And I think that these proposed amendments drafted as they are right now, that they do not strike the proper balance between all of the considerations that should be given per the direction of the master plan. Which includes, I, I know I mentioned this in, in my letter, but that includes things like, you know, preserving our year round residential neighborhoods, maintaining the neighborhood fabric, architectural integrity, making sure that infill and redevelopment is compatible with and enhances existing residential uses. And what we are seeing here is, is just not enough to protect and effectuate those goals for everybody that lives in R one, R two. So number one, I think you got to put this under section four oh two. And what's wrong with that? Why shouldn't there be consideration of all of the factors under section seventeen seventeen? And why shouldn't there be an opportunity under section seventeen eighteen for the neighboring properties to get notice? And to be given an opportunity to be heard. And above and beyond that, when we look at the A D Us in particular, we just found out tonight, and I had missed this too. It's not a minimum six hundred square feet for the A D U. It's, that's, that's the, it shall not exceed, but there's no minimum. I mean, we have no idea how small this thing might be. And that kind of goes to Gordy's point about, you know, what kind of housing are we going to be providing here through this? I, there is so much danger here also of the A D Us becoming effectively, you know, short term rentals. I mean, I could be somebody who has my main home in a hot state and I could still rent the thing for six months, even if I don't plan on being there for six months. So I don't even think a six month minimum is enough. I think the minimum needs to be nine months if you really expect local residents to be the people who are renting these A D Us. There are also very serious problems with the setback requirement of only five feet. And so as I said in my letter, you know, I could be on a, one of the long narrow city lots. My house is at the front of the lot. I'm going to build one of these A D Us. And guess what? I'm not going to build it close to my house. I'm going to build it as far back in my property as possible, five feet from my neighbor. So you know who's going to be burdened by all of that? My neighbor. My neighbor will hear them. My neighbor will hear their conversations when, when the renters are sitting outside, not me. So that is also completely inadequate. The, for, for councilperson Lindsay Walker to say that the A D Us are going to be subject to rigorous review, that is just not the case. If you wanted rigorous review, you would have this under section four oh two. You would allow for seventeen seventeen standards to be considered. You would allow for public input under seventeen eighteen. You know, if, if this was going to be rolled out in a way that really gave the public notice, you, you should be telling us what, what existing provisions are going to be changed. See, that was something that I had to figure out as a lawyer, going in, going to Muni code. I know how to do that, but I'm a lawyer. Your, your regular resident doesn't know how to do that. And that's where I saw, oh my gosh, look at this. Look at what the difference is between putting this under section four oh one instead of putting it under four oh two. Look at how currently going from single to two family is under four oh two, and now it's only going to be under four oh one. And yet, when you read the agendas for the planning commission or the agendas for city council, that never gets mentioned. So there, there really has not been enough information about all of what is going on here. And I, I realize that's, you know, frustrating to council and then probably the planning commission too, but it's not the fault of the public. It, it could have been done better. And I, I think too, just overall, what concerns me is we seem to be just going for this low hanging fruit of A D Us at the risk of we're making our, our one, our two living conditions, you know, unpleasant, whereas now they're pleasant. At the risk of actually devaluing homes within R one, R two, which means less tax revenue. Because, you know, you get one of these A D Us in the property next to you, now you're maybe not going to be able to sell your house. You, you might, you know, have to take, sell that house for a hundred thousand dollars less. And, and so the long term effect could be less tax revenues to the city. And it just seems to me that this is such a risky and speculative way of trying to create affordable housing. I, I would rather see council designate some tax dollars, take some of the tax revenue that's available and commit it to helping incentivizing developers to, to build a nice new apartment building over on the Bear River. I mean, why aren't we doing that instead? Why, why are we going to take the risk of making our, our one, our two districts, you know, less than what they are now? All right. I thank you.
Thank you very much. And I will see if we have other comments. Ms. Marshall. Come on down.
Hey, Marshall, I'm from Michigan. So I, I just had a question. Derek asked about heights on the sixteen foot retirement. And I know you say you're not familiar with the inventory, but a few ago, West Continental Street, past town, you will find at least four beautiful, I think they're either garage apartments or workspaces or homes or places for families to live. They are all over sixteen feet. And they totally blend with the neighborhood. They're very effective and nice. They have been rented. I know sometimes they're not. So I did call and I said, so what about this, you know, what can you do for a dwelling that was only sixteen feet tall? And he said, well, if you have a garage and you've got the proper footing in it, you will at least eight feet for your garage door to go up. And then you have another foot for your ceiling of the garage and for the roof. So what you're going to line up with is seven feet height, you know, living space in the middle. And the slopes, of course, are much smaller. But I would suggest if you do spend this back of the planning commission, look at the six month, three month questions, which I can tell. That you would also really look at whether or not it's suitable to extend this height restriction for garage apartments, which could be a very suitable A D U. As long as it doesn't exceed the height of the main house. My daughter, who's a young person who believes in A D U's and wants to see more people, said, so it would be logical for me, if we rebuild the garage, to put an apartment up there. But they're saying it couldn't be done.
Anything you want to say, Zach?
We could certainly look into that if requested.
Who else would like to speak to council at this time? Sir.
Jeff Grant, Tomato One Baxter Street. I don't know where to start. First, I was going to start with my prepared comments. That as a builder and modeler of this community for twenty years. And the past president of the Home Builders Association that represents Inter Town, Charlotte County, I see it in Shvoi County. I just got back from a huge long trip in Washington, D C. Where we met to Capitol Hill. We met with the Biden administration, she had the Congress hug secretary, among others. H V A. And the point of our vision was to educate Washington, D C on solutions to homeownership. So I thought it was a very fitting, I just got back from this meeting. And even more so, be able to tell you how we set Senator Peters in person, Senator Sabram, in person, Representative Burden in person. And three other U S congressmen, which took time out of their convenience to meet with their delegation in their offices. In Cannonville, in the Hart Center building, and even the White House. It was amazing experience for me, like standing to represent our H V A in the state of Michigan. I thought it was very worthwhile to go and see for them to hear our solutions that we were bringing to them. Housing affordability is across state issue and across the country issue. Seven years ago, the H V A of Michigan commissioned the study and submitted a report to Mishka and in Michigan, kind of wearable ten million Michigan individuals. We saw this an issue in two thousand, it was seven years ago. So seven years ago, we started hiring. Hasn't gotten a lot of traction. Of course, COVID had a lot to do with taking some time back, stepping back from things that were going wrong and worse. One of the things that I did want to say was that as costs had gone up from the pandemic, supply chain issues, the agents offered a number the demand for housing, like through the local interest rates were at two, three percent. All of those things that exactly exacerbated the problem, not to mention the shortage of labor. So there's no one solution to this problem. And there certainly is not, A D Us is not the only solution to this problem. It's, it's a piece. But only if it's implemented well. As I read this. It's not. It's not written well. It's the, you could, you could write an ordinance and then say, we will address those issues in the application. But that's not your job to approve how an application is written. It's not your job to, for someone to come up later, how we can enforce this well, we'll put it in. You know, we'll have all the safety work. And then you just push it. I think it's more complex than that. I think it, I think whatever you write as an ordinance to allow this. The application has to have a piece of draft version. There needs to be a mechanism in writing showing how it's going to be enforced. And until that. I can't see how you could approve it. When this is kind of a permanent. Now, we heard some staff say it's going to be difficult to enforce. I don't know who's going to enforce it. It's ten units of you, right? If someone can't figure out a way to enforce ten units. Maybe that's not the right person to have in that place. Or you need to dedicate some staff to that. There's a statistic that says that two out of three households own their own homes in the U S. What's Petoskey? Fifty percent?
Fifty-two.
Okay. So I don't want to say Petoskey's not average, but it goes to my point that we have a major issue with rental enforcement, inspection. It just, this is just another thing to lay on there. We are already above average or below average, I should say. And it's once again going to be another example that will actually lower that number. The Snyder administration on his waning days in office was trying to reduce government and run from a stakeholder that reviewed the building codes. Used to be a twelve person builders, building inspector, city planners, open portion of officials. Manufacturers, people who knew what the code and the impacts the codes had to a two person appointed set of bureaucrats who know nothing about building, building codes, the cost impacts that it might have. And that kind of sounds like what is being recommended here. You're going from a community neighbor, citizen, stakeholder review down to what sounds like a one person oversight. And that process seems skewed to be sort of going backwards. That it's going from many eyes looking at it giving various points of view to one.
You have one minute.
On a personal level, I think A D Us are going to compound our traffic issues for that more than one occasion. Very familiar with working on Michigan street. I personally remodeling about seven million dollars in the city of Petoskey. I know how tight it is to drive a car down some of these streets that have rentals on both sides, full cars. Buses don't fit, trucks don't fit. And now that the city's building all these bump outs at every intersection, they're losing four parking spaces on every block and nobody can turn. I just think this is going in the wrong direction. Is it going to be taxed as a single family principal residence? That residence, that unit in the back is in fact a rental? Is there a separate way? Is there a way, a way to proportionate or pro rate the taxes as to principal versus non homestead? Question. Two more, two more.
Quickly.
In several places in the ordinance, as it's written, it said the dwelling shall, it needs to be clarified as you rewrite this thing, as I know you're going to. That it should say the principal residence. Don't be vague about which, are you talking about the dwelling, that the accessory dwelling, or you're talking about the principal dwelling? So only to call it the dwelling shall is made. And I think that's the last of my comments.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to council at this time?
Matthew Pedig. Sixth Michigan street. I I have a thing written up that I'm not going to read that, but I'm going to speak in favor of this imperfect change to the ordinance. It addresses very much, but it dips our toes in water. Work with. And I want to say I'm in favor of it because in some ways, it's actually a reversion to the historical development pattern that made Petoskey a beautiful, walkable little city. The town was built long before modern zoning ordinances, long before anyone even conceived of the idea of single family zoning. And single family zoning restrictions have varied guard and disturbed history. Its original purpose was racial segregation. And whether it's intentional or not, it still serves to separate, create economic segregation. They have not been formal here. So I mean, it's a, it's a, I think it's a valid question while we're asking all this. Why, why do we have single family zoning? Why do we have, why don't we have a review process for single family homes that the public can wait? Why is that going to pass and not to? It's complicated, but it shouldn't, there's no reason that should be, especially because the historical pattern had all these things, historical pattern had carriage houses. It had small houses. It had duplexes. It had all these things. And it's only the modern, actually post war, post World War Two zoning ordinances that said, no, we only want suburban large lots. Large setbacks and only single family. large setbacks, and only single-family homes. So I, I, I think it's, 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 it's a great putting our toes in the water. It will not change very much because there's a ton of other stuff in this ordinance that will prevent anything from being built. I, I would be surprised if you get 10 here. I'd be happy if we got 10 here. I'd be happy if we absolutely agree. That'd be great. There's still a ton of other stuff that will prevent these from actually being built. And especially the two-family duplexes. I don't, I don't see how any of those are going to get built with the current restrictions, setbacks, parking requirements, all that stuff. And also, and I guess I just wanted to share a anecdote of how this works for affordable houses. I, I'm a young guy. I bought a house in California. Got a mortgage for it. It had a super large garage that we converted into ADUs. We lived there for a while. We worked on it, sweat equity into this name with the intention of renting it out. We actually ended up moving from California, but kept the house. I, I rent, I ended up renting it to a young family that we knew. This young family rents the whole property. They sublet out the ADUs. That, that allowed them to go from having three kids in a two-bedroom apartment with no yard to a, to a nice small house with a yard that they would not have been able to afford otherwise. So their living arrangement is improved, their ability to, to build wealth is improved. Now, you know, this property now is able to be used more productively than otherwise would have. And in their city, they, they are only allowed to rent out on an eight days. And here, they rented out as a short-term rental on an eight days a year or something like that. And then they ended up like traveling nurses and others who, three months days or something like that. In the other time, so it, it's, it's not just for the people that are going to be housing. It is actually, and presents more affordability for existing homeowners to build wealth. So it, it's complicated, but there's a lot to it that I think we're, we're not actually going to. And then I guess I would also say that there is a huge demand for walkable neighborhoods because we don't really build them anymore because they're kind of zoned out of existence. And so that's part of the reason why I wouldn't even expect house, housing crisis to go down in these neighborhoods that are a lot heavy. Because they're going to be, the demand is going to be there. The demand will always be there. Like not everybody wants to live, but the demand will be there. And the focus should not be, the priority should not be affordable housing. It should actually be communal prosperity. And creating a walkable municipal city will create communal prosperity that will raise the standard of everyone who lives in it. That's more important than making houses affordable.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to counsel? Yes?
Andrea Jacobs from Housing North and the Emmett County Housing Ready Co. Rend Director. And.
Your, your residency?
Of Maple River Township, 3975 Valley Road. I have said it on many of the planning commission meetings and this, as a discussion sort of inspiration. So I can speak to a couple of the sort of paths of logic, the three-month thing, like Convenio's addressed. It was specifically to alleviate some of the pressure on the seasonal workforce for some of our small businesses in the area that can't necessarily afford to provide that, you know, their one or two employees a place based on their own, you know, for their own. Some other things that were mentioned tonight, concerns about ADUs. It actually statistically is proven in towns where this is a part of their design and their zoning. It increases property value. To your point, it is an affordability issue for both the homeowner and the possible renter. Or in the case of multi-generational families, which have quadrupled in the past 10 years. It allows for families to address some transportation difficulties that they might be having in our own beloved community. Childcare issues that they might be having, just a matter of aging in place with dignity that they might be able to address. You know, affordability can be addressed with size, especially in an expensive building environment that we have right now. But it, it also speaks to the spectrum of our lifestyle choices, our income restrictions. It, the, where are we at in our, our lifetime? We're making choices as young people or older people. We're making choices, you know, to, to be in a walkable community on purpose, not just because we can't afford a car. You know, these are things that are happening in our, our cities and our villages that are able to respond to that. Actually do increase their quality of life for all of their citizens and the viability of their small businesses. So it is an important step. This might not be the exact language that makes everybody happy, but it did come from a long and a lot of discussion, a lot of intentional dialogue about the design of the buildings. Again, it's going to have to be a dwelling unit that meets building standards, which means kitchen, bathroom, et cetera. It's going to be safe and it's not going to be for everybody because it's still very, very expensive to build. So it's not, this isn't an easy fix. As we talked about already, you know, this isn't, it's not a total solution, but it does help. And it does push the needle a little bit and it does address some of what we're facing in downtown Petoskey and across our larger region. So thank you for listening and patience with all the consideration and not only the public, but the effort that went into it from a planning commission standpoint as well. And, you know, like you said, might not be perfect this time around, but it is really important that we keep it moving forward. Thank you.
What do you see makes it perfect?
Oh, I don't, I'm not sure. I'm at the comfort level of the community and, and, and I think, you know, the neighborhood residents coming out and, and saying their concern about it lends itself to actually a greater success of the program because those very neighbors are going to be sort of watching over and making sure it doesn't become something that is unsettling to, to their area and actually is, you know, proven to increase the stability of neighborhoods because it allows families, multi-generational families maybe, or young families that, that can, you know, increase an income stream thereby being able to afford in that neighborhood and stay in that neighborhood and not get priced out when the taxes go up nine percent in one year. You know, I mean, it's, it's happening everywhere. It's happening to all of us. So I, I think we do have a good chance of success here, especially with 10 units a year. But it allows us to readjust and refocus after that. You know, there'll still be a planning commission after that first year. There'll still be a city council.
But you had, you had said it's not perfect.
I'm just saying.
But it could be, what is perfect? What tweaks can we do to this to make it better?
I think that, I think that's up to you.
Well, but you have the observation, you're the person in the housing field.
Yeah.
You've heard this discussion. You've said it's not perfect, but it's good.
One aspect of it that would address some concerns that, that was touched on earlier is that deed restriction and the idea behind the, the deed restriction that the agreement between the resident and the community. And I know that Housing North specifically is prepared to steward deed restrictions and having Housing North staff in the area to oversee and help sort of keep eyes on those properties specifically when they've been approved for longer-term rental or, or the residency of the primary, the primary dwelling family.
So you're offering enforcement?
Well.
Yeah, we just said.
Oversight. I would say, yeah, I mean, I can definitely, definitely Housing Ready staff in place can keep eyes on that property and be in communication with the governing bodies and staff and maybe decide what, whatever that new process of enforcement might be. For sure. And, I mean, I, I know that City Council has entered into discussions with Housing North in the past as far as deed restrictions. So, you know, that's something that could evolve and it might, this, this program might be a good opportunity for that to sort of be further explored. So that might, that might alleviate some concerns of the community.
Okay.
In that form. I think Kate's point to the, to the above garage departments and what was mentioned before that too. I think that's, that's important to consider.
The height situation.
The heights, yeah. I think that's something that we thought of, but didn't really fully flesh out in the planning commission.
Okay.
And I think, I, I do think that that three-month time period, though it seems abrupt, is very, very important to our local economy, especially being so close in the residential areas around downtown. Does that viable, walkable aspect so that employees can get to their jobs will really, really increase the, the possibility of success of our small businesses in town.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to counsel? Yes, come on forward.
My name is Heidi Shear and I'm at 808 Crooked Tree Drive. And I thought, learning about this, I just got an email today from the Chamber of Commerce that it's going to be on the agenda. So I didn't know until a few hours ago. So I came in as a, a community member who was concerned about bringing employees to the area. Last summer, my husband and I committed our own house and we had seven young people live with us at our house. So they could work and not deal with a private place and parking was an issue and all that kind of stuff. So I invested in this and I, I love this idea, but just listening to everybody tonight, I did hear some concerns that I think might need to be addressed before it goes to a final vote. I respect this door, this door. And the other where, well, things are very vague. It does need to, more problems. And I think in ways that can be tightened up, I had a concern about the 16-foot as well. I was trying to imagine what that could actually create. So I do feel like there, I think it's a great idea and I think moving it forward. But I just feel like just listening, you know, tonight, there, I feel like there's some concerns that should be tightened up before the council.
Thank you. Yes?
I just had one thing, you know, responding to this idea that it's case that the three-month thing is going to serve some employees because there's no guarantee that the homeowner is going to rent to probably employees who don't have any income that a three-month summer resident might. So they could pay more money renting for two months of summer to a visitor and the other three months to employees. So there's no guarantee that.
Anyone else wish to speak to counsel on this matter? Take it back to counsel for possible discussion moving forward. Mr. Wagner, anything? Mr. Shields?
Nothing more.
Okay. Swak, Walter? You just wanted to hear some people and sort of, I didn't know if you wanted to talk after that.
Actually, I think, thank you. Yeah, I, I think it's important to say thank you for all those comments and, and the dialogue. And I want to reiterate, what I feel is our shared desire to protect our community, protect the character, the store's charm and all those, all that we have with this community. What I'm hearing is some disagreements in how I do that. And while I may personally don't share some of those concerns and actually have the concern, opposite concern of not moving this forward and not acting on moving this ordinance and others forward, this imperfect ordinance, thanks for that word. I, I, I would let see less restrictions than what this ordinance says. So, so there's disagreements on how we protect our community. But I, I want to obviously say that I think it's important, this ordinance is a small step in going forward and protecting the character, the livability, the community aspect of our community. And, and, you know, I'm going out into our community, I'm, I'm talking to my neighbors, I'm going to, I'm hearing, understanding both sides of this, all, all the concerns and, and I am going to continue to advocate for that dialogue and those, and hearing the people. So thank you for your comments tonight.
What else? I take it to this platform for both, both votes.
Shields?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
DeMore?
No.
Wagner?
Yes.
Okay.
Well. I know, I have real issues with this. It's going to pass three, three, three votes anyway. I would support a vote yes, but I hope that we will revisit some of those things such as 16-foot. Let's get it correct. We're going to, we business approval of a social district in the application permit submitted by Crooked Tree Art Center 461 East Mitchell Street. Mr. Terry.
Sarah? Yeah, I just got a couple of real points I want to bring up on this. And also Becky is here to talk about from the downtown side. Obviously we have Crooked Tree here, so representative. So I'll talk on that. The downtown social district application, city started this a number of years ago. I do have in front of you because it was requested a copy of what the social district is. So this is the area that you can get a drink and then walk around in the downtown area on sidewalks. Streets are not allowed. We could actually drink a drink that you purchase within the downtown area. We have seven licensees already, Crooked Tree, so it does have a class C liquor license and they are requesting to become a member of the social district. And it does require council approval, which in their file application that would go to state for state approval. Is any questions that Becky can answer or?
DeMore?
I guess mine is more just a policy question about this. And it's not directed to Crooked Tree in any way, but I just wonder, have we thought about how many of these we want to have in terms of people wandering about in this area drinking? Not that there's anything wrong with that, but I just wonder, had there been any discussions prior to now about we really don't want to go beyond a certain number or what you're thinking on that? If any.
Yes. My, my recollection is we did not set a target number. We did not set a minimum or maximum. The application has to go to the state. It's unfortunately, it takes a long time. This started during COVID and the shutdown as an experiment. Becky can probably speak to that a little bit. Let's try this out, see what happens. Let's relook at what hours it's allowed. Let's speak with public safety. And I think Matt Frieda said at least once there have not been issues.
We got any issues that I know of?
Yeah, that's like zero. And I, I think this just makes it accessible a little more broadly. You know, it's like, I almost don't think we could stop anybody at this point because it'd almost be discriminatory to say, oh, they can do it, but you can't. But that's my recollection. Good question though.
I'm not sure, how many more businesses downtown could ask for one of these? I mean, I'm looking at the list of all the businesses that serve alcohol downtown. I think the bulk of around that list already. I don't know who else could even request one.
The bulk are on that list.
But I don't. But there are probably very few. So I think it wasn't really to exclude anybody and since we haven't done that, we haven't said, you know, the first seven in the door get it. So hurry up. It's kind of been, you know, as they come and request that the city's approved it.
So I'm Mitchell. Currently, TAP 30 of those are not involved.
Oh, who else is not? Chandler, not, uh, the TAP 30.
The poor, yes.
Oh. All I read is one, two, three, four, five, six on this.
That's kind of, that's kind of outdated one, but I put that on there for us to show you the area that was. That was from the previous meeting, not like, it's not current.
I'll support this with, I, I find it sad that we have to have the ability of people. I'll support this with, I, I find it sad that we have to have the ability of people to walk around the streets drinking and carrying alcohol. I, I, I have family members in my family that are, uh, don't drink as of alcoholism. I don't think this is really, uh, commendable to a family, to, to bringing families around. Um, I understand we get some reports from the city public safety director, we'll, we'll do something about that. I, I just had to say that, that I, I don't think social distance drinking, you know, we have bars, we have places you can drink. I, I just don't feel, I, I don't know. I will support this because we've got this. But I think it's a poor, it's poor for the city of Petoskey to be putting people out there drinking on streets. That's all, because then we have children.
And sidewalks, absolutely.
Well, even worse, it's on sidewalks where everybody else is too. Maybe if they were in the street, it'd be bad. Is there concerns about the youth? I was in education for forty-two years, I have, I have concerns about, uh, showing this as a way of, a good way of lifestyle. That's all. So, any other discussion? Do I have a motion? Do you want to speak? Come on down.
Megan Nguyen, ten fifteen, Will Street, representing Crooked Tree Art Center. Really, for Crooked Tree, we do not have an ongoing bar on a regular basis. This is event specific. Crooked Tree, we do have events on our Goodwell Plaza that are adult only events and not, not our family friendly, say, here's you at the art center, which would never have alcohol in a family, family event. Uh, we are on the, um, I always mess up directions, so would that be the easternmost border of what could possibly be part of the, uh, the social district? And for us, it is inviting the community, uh, people who attend events at Crooked Tree back into the business district after they've attended an early event and head downtown to either do more shopping or, um, go to another restaurant. Um, and again, we're looking at, I'm in a ballpark, but maybe six events a year where we would be realizing this social district presence.
Sounds good. Thank you. Anyone else, council, do I have a motion? Ms. Walker?
I'd be happy to make a motion, mayor, to approve Crooked Tree Art Center for a Class C, um, excuse me, to be one of the social district applicants.
They have a second? One second. Mr. Wagner's second motion from Ms. Walker, second from Mr. Wagner, here to discuss in council. Mr. Wagner? Just quickly, some people know that I'm, uh, I direct, but I'm one of the biggest advocates for, um, our community in recovery in this town. And I, I echo what the mayor said, that when we voted to approve our social district, there was a sense that it could help our downtown businesses and also that we already had, um, laws, ordinances in place that allowed drinking at picnic grounds at all of our parks downtown, so it wasn't completely new. And, um, and so I, I want to respect that our folks who are in recovery, people like my, my wife, who has never been drunk in her life, and, uh, just respects drinking and, and so I, I speak on behalf of the board and I, I haven't seen an issue thankfully. Mr. Moore?
I just want to echo, uh, the mayor's concerns as well, without saying more to that, I'm new to this. I certainly understand the, the reason that Crooked Tree wants to do this, but there's a lot of water under the bridge here already, but I support your concerns.
I thought that was, I felt it was a COVID thing. I, I really supported it because I felt it was a thing for COVID. And that's why I supported it initially and I thought it would go away. Any other discussion, council? Public wish to weigh in on this? Go ahead.
Yeah, we had a meeting on Jackson Street, I would be missed if I didn't speak to editing on these.
All right.
But I'm a believer, just like when the city was talking about, um, licenses or non-bars to have, or like, or a community block license or something like that. That the pie of, I want to say the pie of drinkers is this big. And it doesn't matter how many times you slice that pie. It's still only going to serve this many people. So I don't, I don't think adding, I support, uh, the motion, uh, for Crooked Tree, um, for that very reason. I don't think people are going to flock into downtown Petoskey and run around, you know, because one more place has this license. I think it's just going to take it from one establishment to another, it's going to add challenges that we guys are respectfully concerned about.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? They're being, and we'll go to city clerk Plath for roll.
Walker?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
DeMore?
Aye.
Shields?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes. Which is passed by zero. We have three things left on the agenda. One is the authorization contracted with Spire County Excavating Harbor Springs and the amount of three hundred and one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars for construction of this Stalatas Mission Beach project. Kendall, Kendall Smith is our arts and rec director and he's up.
Thank you. So it's been, uh, three hours, three, three, three years, uh, two, two studies and one pandemic major career project project off the ground. Started in, in twenty nineteen, feasibility study through Eagle, um, Eagle and Noah, who were very interested in pursuing the development of it. So, uh, on the twenty eighth, something to grant, and what we've proven, certainly things have been delayed, prices have increased, uh, like everything. So, but we do have, this is out of the tip of fund, which is a, a not, it's not general fund, very specific capital improvement. It's a development dollars in the tip of district, so that's, this is a project that is eligible for. Uh, for that, we, we did put two hundred and fifty thousand in, in the budget, uh, that came in high. Uh, we, we, we don't, we are going to have the ability to value engineer, uh, to, to reduce, to reduce the, the bottom line cost. The concern is, uh, the grant needs to be, this project needs to be completed by the end of the year. Um, and so my recommendation is we, is we provide, uh, we work with staff and our consultants to continue to work with the, with the, uh, Tri County, and we will find, we will find ways where we can, we can, um, come a little bit closer to the budget. Yes, that's, so, uh, we want to allow lines down to have time to, to purchase the products, get it scheduled in with their schedule and to security sub contractor. So, um, that is the recommendation for this project. And if you don't remember the project, Sarah, do you have a picture?
I did include, they do have a, kind of a, so, for the show.
That's our end game right there.
Anything you wish to ask Ms. Walker?
Thank you, mayor. Uh, thank you, Kendall, for this, I know this has been a long time in the works. Can you remind me who the other consultants are, like the landscape architecture firm? And are we consulting with Tip of the Mid Water Chamber Council on this project?
They, so, as I mentioned, we did two studies. Okay, the first was a feasibility study, that included the, the, we actually had a representative from the state, from Eagle, walking project with us. We used, uh, you know, back in Waverly was, was the, the landscape architect, if you're near in firm. We use, um, I'm sorry, I can't remember the environmental group. Uh, there was another environmental group that we worked with, um, and actually Baird, Baird, uh, also helped with, uh, some of the, some of the, the heterogeneity behind it. So we, we touched, I think, as many people as we possibly could to make sure that we're going to do it the right way. Everything needs to be native, everything needs to be natural. Um, this is a very, it's called a low cost construction. Um, meaning that we're not moving a lot of dirt, there's not a pull up, we're basically refining with the existing shoreline. We're just providing access to wherever the shore up with, you know, native landscaping.
So low impact development?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that.
Anything else? Mr. Wagner?
Thank you.
Clarify, I think I know this answer. I think I'm close to a hundred percent, but where tip of dollars come from? And why that's different than general fund dollars?
Tip of dollars, yeah.
Tip of dollars comes from the tip of fund, this has started back in nineteen eighty-three, I believe, it comes from Bear River Valley.
Yeah.
It goes on a river valley this way, then all the entire waterfront along the front here. Uh, the increase of property tax values of the adjoining properties, or that increase in taxable value is captured and put into this fund. So it's been doing that for, it's been there for thirty years now. And that's what's bought and paid for the waterfront of Bear River Valley, et cetera, to date. And it allows us to do some of these, fund some of these projects that we have along the waterfront.
Yeah.
It has the stamp of George Porter.
It has definitely got the stamp of George.
Thank you. I got motion to do it.
We did get a hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred. You're not trying to say a hundred and twelve, uh, five hundred dollar grant from Eagle.
Counsel, anything else? Any questions? Do I have a possible motion, Mr. Shields?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the construction bid to Tri County Excavating.
For three hundred and one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars. Do I have a second? Hold on, which one?
Go ahead, Brian.
Okay, Mr. Wagner, so we got a motion from Mr. Shields and a second from Mr. Wagner. Any other discussion, council? There's a public wish to weigh in on this, maybe? Nobody online. We'll go to Ms. Plath for a roll.
Shields?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
DeMore?
Aye.
Walker?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Kendall, you can go home. Next is a proposal, a proposed license agreement with the Little Travers Bay Faring Company for the operation of this special events vehicle. Taking away.
So we do, I do have, uh, two representatives from the Little Travers Bay Ferry Company, Chris Chamberlain and Lee Cliken. They are available, um, asking specifics about the operation of the boat. Basically, what we have is, we go back a few years, we've, we have a great relationship with Barry. It's, it's a beneficial partner. Um, you recall earlier this year, we approved them to operate out of the resource center. Um, so it's kind of the hum of their, of their existence right now is, is on prime danger. So, uh, what, what they are proposing is for you to approve this agreement that will provide an additional boat, a sixty-five foot, foot boat that would be available for special events. For, for weddings, for, uh, family trips, for sunset cruises, for, for whatever. Um, it would, it would be more on the, on the outside of eight years. And it's, it, it, it wouldn't affect our service area, uh, they would, sort of, they would give gas to us, but, so it would not be a storage or more in, in the marine property, doesn't cause a slip. And it's, it's, we've gone through the infrastructure, I've met with staff, um, we've met with, with Chris, with Amy, and, um, are comfortable, comfortable going, uh, directly to this, to you for approval.
So that they don't start, no docking fees like with the other ferry?
There are not.
Docking fees, a hundred and four dollars.
I use your hundred and four dollars today.
Oh, with this?
With this ferry.
With this ferry boat?
Yeah.
Wow, okay, wow.
These are one year agreement that can be reviewed, reviewed, uh, if those parties wish to, and it has been reviewed by the city office, city attorney, and agreed to it as well.
Mr. Moore, question?
Yes, my question is, as a part of these events, will there be, on the theme of alcohol, sorry, will alcohol be served as a part of those events?
Hi, I'm Chris Chamberlain, I have a residence over in Charlevoix, but also downstate. I operate a week, well, this week, number five in the group of boats that operate. I do have three other liquor licenses on my other boat vessels downstate. You can look up our information, we have, I can't remember when the last violation was, we've been doing this for thirty plus years, so, um, we believe in the safe consumption and supervision, we follow all the rules and regulations and, uh, it is quite a lengthy process to get a new liquor license, but, uh, eventually we would like to be able to offer a peony colada to you while you watch the sunset out on, uh, the best view in northern Michigan, so.
So as of, as of now, no, but you hope to do so?
Uh, so, when we brought the ferry in, um, two years ago, uh, we partnered with Little Travers Bay Foundation as a nonprofit to help set this up. We'll be hopefully doing some very limited, um, nonprofits can pull temporary liquor licenses. And we hope to do that, uh, until we get something more permanent established and that would help, uh, their fundraising. They sponsored some school trips out on the ferry, uh, right after Memorial Day this year and they do some other good activities for the community, so.
Right.
So yes, there would be some limited ones this year and then, uh, once we get a liquor, a permanent one set up, that will take six months.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, council? Mr. Wagner? I appreciate, we, we, the, the mayor and I attended a meeting of the Northern Lakes Economic Alliance a couple of months ago and I shared some of my perspective on that, this focus on the blue economy, blue water economy. This is just another great example and I appreciate your, your branding it the Petoskey Princess.
I'm going to take care of that right now.
So is that going to be the name?
Well, it was until about a week ago. It's a long conversation, but for another time perhaps, uh, for right now, we actually settled on the Harbor Princess and then we just left it at that. Uh, I, I wanted, that was my choice. We're not picking sides, not picking sides, I promise that, uh, there, there was something else in the community here that proposed a potential real conflict for us that we didn't want to even get into, so.
A love dog or something.
The, off the record, I'll say there.
I'll support it anyway, but.
If you're from the area, this is the original Emerald Isle boat that ran from nineteen fifty-five to nineteen seventies off to Beaver Island, then it did twenty years at Mackinac Island, under Arden Line, and it's been, uh, right next to me in Detroit, uh, as a diamond jack, uh, since nineteen ninety-one.
Okay. It's, let, let to keep the history going, Mr. Shields?
Just want to comment and say how wonderful and thank you for working on our community.
Do I have a motion? I'll motion to approve the agreement.
A second.
Got a motion from Mr. Wagner, a second from this. What a motion from Mr. Wagner and a second from Mr. Shields. Any other discussion, council? This is a public wish to, you got one minute.
There were seconds. I would just think the suggestion as a business owner, um, that, uh, agreement, um, not go twelve months, because I'm sure in their business model, they want to know, uh, next year whether you're going to approve this as well. So I would like to, like you to consider the date as you practice, so that they can plan for twenty twenty-three and beyond, that they're not waiting until two weeks before the season to know the rest of the business model.
They could also come back sooner than, later, they cannot wait to the last minute, we like it earlier. I, I have a full confidence the city council at this stage is going to support continuation of, with, with this approval, if they vote for approval. I, I'm not worried about it, Jeff. Mr. Public Director of?
Touch him with. He's waiting for counsel.
Oh, yeah, I thought you had something you wanted to add on this one, okay. When you step up to the mic, we call, I call on you. Okay, go to Ms. Plath for a roll.
Wagner?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
DeMore?
Aye.
Walker?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes, motion passes five zero. Good luck, we look forward to seeing you this summer. I know my nephews, my nephews and nieces are all excited about it, I know. Next, the last on the agenda. Adopt so the proposed resolution that would approve, approve Bayfront Park clock tower, canister modifications. And I'm going to turn that over to Kendall once again.
Right, so thank you, um, you recall, um, we did approve. Right, so thank you. Um you recall, um we did approve the, the, uh we moved up this capital improvements project. That was scheduled for, for, for next year. This year, um the lights, fewer, fewer lights were concerned about future product costs, so. Company came in, Verden came in, they took it apart, they took it to their factory. It's natty and realized that fiberglass that was holding the canister was so fragile and brittle that it couldn't be. Couldn't be mended, it couldn't be, couldn't be repaired. So uh what, what, what they're proposing is they recreate the canisters out of rolled aluminum. That will hold the LEDs, they will provide a little maintenance access door. Uh on it, uh it also houses the uh motors for the clock. Again, this is a Tifa fund project. And um so this is, you know, this is something that really no one could have predicted. No, they didn't even know until they got it back to their shop, the integrity of these canisters, which are, you know, twenty-five plus years old. So uh what we are, what we are asking for is the approval out of the Tifa fund for fifty-six thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. So we can get the clock tower, um clock tower back, because it seems whenever I'm out, I used to question of where the hands. When can I look at the clock? So that's, that's what this is, this is about.
Mr. Moore?
Oh, thank you. Did they give you information about the life of the upgrades? Because these are significant investments, so I'm curious if you have that information.
The roll aluminum is going to be much more durable product than the fiberglass previously was lasted thirty years. It will be more resistant to weather. Like fiberglass, it just dries out from, so. This is, this is a better, because I did ask that question. Um and this is, this is a better, better product that should last, you know, even longer than the fiberglass canister that.
Mr. Shields?
Other, other hidden costs? I, I mean, it's just like I'm on call that uh we started preparing it and.
I mean, this is, this is a, this is a major renovation. Yeah, it was scheduled for next year. Every year, Verden comes up. And we, we have a preventative maintenance agreement with them, so they come up and they look at, you know, they, they. Oil the engines and turn the motors and they check everything. Likely we're not going to have to deal with any light replacements. It's all going to be LED, so it's gonna, you know, ultimately be a. A bunch, it'll be a less maintenance from a, from a lighting standpoint, it'll be from a utility standpoint, keep it running. So this, this will be a.
I guess really nothing else that can get replaced. Like the whole thing may be replaced pretty much, except for the, you know, the clock faces, the hands, which are historic and they're not going to change, so. We don't see where there could be any more hidden costs, because it's all been taken out and they're replacing it out, so.
Pretty much all parts are out.
Pretty much got it.
Yeah.
And the controller uh is in, is housed within the Resource Center building, so that, that didn't even solve the deal.
I do get calls when the thing was not telling the correct time, let me tell you. I would get a call from somebody at eight o'clock at night that the clock is not running. And I, I don't bother him with it because there's, we don't have a liar long enough. Uh Lindsey?
Thank you, Mayor. Um so the original cost for replacement, um and this comes out of the same Tifa account, right? Which we have a balance of nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars minus the three hundred and one thousand that we just approved. So we're down to six hundred thousand dollars.
That's not, that's not, that's not correct, no.
It's a different fund?
No, 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 your math is incorrect.
Okay, excuse me.
We started off the beginning of the year at that nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars. We take in about four hundred and five hundred thousand dollars in captured revenues. That will fund the projects that we have going this year.
Okay.
Okay, so now this is gonna, we will dip into it a little bit, but not to the tune of three hundred and something thousand. It might be just eighty, ninety thousand overall.
I'm sorry, so the cost of repairs is covered through the Tifa fund, which has a nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollar balance. Didn't we just approve Tri-County Excavating for three hundred thousand dollars?
Correct, so it comes out of there, but I guess at the same time we have.
You're replenishing it annually.
Capture, capture, the revenues are actually the revenues of the operating thing that funds all these programs every year.
Okay, but we do, I mean, in terms of a balance, you are deducting the three hundred thousand dollars from the nine hundred and eighty-seven. And then now the original cost for repair quoted by Verden, and they were the only bidder, correct? As they are the manufacturer. So it's forty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars. And now we're asking, now they've got everything together down there wherever Verden is located in Cincinnati, thank you. So they've got all of our stuff there, and now they discovered it's an additional fifty-six thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars. So for a total of a hundred and five thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars. Seven. Seven dollars.
Eight.
Yeah, so a hundred and five thousand dollars, just for operating, okay? So that's the cost for. A very, like, people are very emotionally attached to this clock tower pause. It's like very symbolic of our city, right? So the cost is a hundred, like, in. Yes.
It was.
The forty-nine, we already approved it.
So the total of the project is a hundred and five thousand dollars. That's what I wanted.
Hundred and five, two eighty-four. Good, are you asking a question?
No, I just wanted it to be very clear that the clock tower to repair it is a total of a hundred and five thousand dollars.
Yes, it is. Two hundred and eighty-four.
It's two and a half times my income.
Ms. Demore?
I guess, I, I do just want to speak to that because that's a lot of money. But, but the problem is, this is an existing fixture. So it's not as though we're saying, let's go spend in the midst of all that's going on in the economy. A hundred thousand dollars to buy something. This is so, I, I mean, to me, I, I appreciate it's a lot of money, but I also think we have a duty to keep up. Infrastructure that we've already invested city dollars in, so that would be my, my plea or approach.
Mr. Shields, you wish to speak?
Yeah, I want to echo Mr. Moore's comments that, yeah, you know, it's a good reminder of, of when we do new infrastructure, that we have to take care of it. But I think it is important to maintain, part of keeping the wealth in our community is maintaining our existing infrastructure.
This is not coming out of the general fund either.
I understand that, Mayor. It's really clear right here.
I know, but I'm telling, I'm not, this officer, I'm not telling you, I'm telling the general public here. That says, wow, that's a lot of money. And it's coming out of funds that are set aside for improvements on projects that are there now.
And can I also ask, Mayor, can I?
Please.
So what other, what geographic area qualifies for Tifa type spending, other than the waterfront proper?
Uh Bear River Valley property, I think all the way up to Sheridan.
Pretty much, yes.
And like on either side of the river, like?
The city property.
Eight hundred feet, okay, so city property owned, so it's only city-owned property.
Correct.
Got it, thank you.
I have a bid for the sidewalks that go from uh, what's the side street over here? Uh Lake Street that goes up, uh up the hill, Mr.?
To the Bear River Valley.
It pays for all of them.
This is akin to, to the stair tower project we did. Uh the replacement of an old infrastructure that was a Tifa project.
I need a motion. Mr. Wagner, the question is, when, when will the clock be repaired? Because I, I've been asked nothing more, more publicly than that in the last three weeks. And then I'll make a motion. Best guess?
Best guess, I ask them the same question, is, is three to four months. But to try to get an answer from, you know, uh the contractor is, is very difficult when you have. Inventory issues and possibilities.
I've been asked a lot.
Be nice to have it done, be nice to have it done by.
I'll motion, motion to move the. That'll motion from Mr. Wagner, a second from Ms. Demore, any other discussion, counsel? In order to public any comments. I go to Ms. Platt for a roll.
Wagner?
Yes.
Demore?
Hi.
Shields?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Last, city council comment starting with word for Ms. Walker.
So looking forward to our city conventions and our work conventions. I know that I have a long list of people to talk to and recruit to come up to those meetings. And I look forward to door knocking in my neighborhood and talking to people about the issues that are important to them and to our city in, in, in general.
Word three, Mr. Wagner. On behalf of the Sunrise Rotary, we will be in like nine hours, Megan. We, the Fourth of July is coming up quickly, and we are, we've agreed for the second year in a row to organize our fireworks and Fourth of July parade. We've got great community involvement. I think we're still looking for some more of your volunteers, but it's gonna be a great parade, firework show, musical entertainment. Thank you. Sounds good, yeah. Word two, Mr. Shields.
Yeah, uh happy Juneteenth, uh somebody today, uh today. Uh I mean, I know there's a member from the community that raised a question about the way to. Shut up, set up fireworks on Juneteenth, and the answer to that was, it's not one of the. Holidays that's recognized for doing fireworks. I have a question, uh Mayor, and you can do this more time. And so do, does, has city council, uh recognized federal holidays? Is that something we do? In the past?
The city council, and the laws passed to allow fireworks, the city council have the option of setting what dates you could allow fireworks in the city. Uh and the most restrictive you can have is to approve the seven days that are listed within state law. And that's what city council did. There's a lot of concern about PTSD, about fireworks, about things coming down on your buildings. And I've had that happen where I've been before and burned through canvases and things of mine. So I think there was a real strong opinion of it's not allowed any more days than the city had to with the density we have. So that's what it was. The city section is the day before, it's the day after, but yeah, and that's another thought. That's what, that's what council decided to do.
Yep, no, I'm not advocating for doing that, I just.
If you wish to revisit it, bring it up and we'll put it on the agenda for future.
Because it is an ordinance they passed, and city council would just, would need to pass new ordinance.
No, and I, I think my question was more on recognizing holidays apart from the fireworks. If that's something that we've done in the past, and thinking it's just a way to work with this community owner. Uh uh and the recognition of Juneteenth. Forward for discussion, and the last thing, Mayor, is um we, there was a Tifa training that several of us here in council were at. Um I thought it was very helpful, I appreciate those who are putting it on, and it makes me want to, uh again, uh encourage council to look at. Uh economic development incentive policy, that can guide developers in their pursuit of Tifa, among other incentives. Thank you.
Ms. Demore, word one.
I just want to say a big kudos to the Public Safety Department for that open house that they ran. That was incredible. I don't know if anybody here, I know Brian was there, um but what a great community gathering, lots of things for young people to do. Like try to put out fires in the house, pretend fires. It was just a really, really cool event and a lot of uh effort and volunteer activity, so kudos to the department.
I uh was, had the opportunity of also attending the Tiff uh on Wednesday, as well as the uh, went to the Public Safety Open House. And uh I think it's just great, the number of children, of kids that are there. The open arms of firemen, policemen, putting them into uh, from the rescue boats to uh using the fire hose assisting. Blowing wa, windows that are fake windows for kids with fire hoses. I think it's just outstanding for public safety. I made sure to let Mr. Mr. Breed, uh Matt Breed know that city council supported him. I know one thing he asked for was funds for possibly putting a full-time, helping to pay for a. Officer in Potaski High School full-time. Right now, it's a part, part, part-time, and I think we need to look at in the future budget. Even though it's, it's maybe difficult, I think it's an important area to look at, uh considering what's going on in the world right now. It's so important to keep our kids safe. There are no further business coming for this council. I call this meeting adjourned at ten?
Ten twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
Ten thirty, like you thought.
I was off two minutes, darn.